Move on to special presentations, we'll start with Mr. Forte reviewing our 2018-19 goals. And I believe everyone has a copy of his presentation printed out, thank you.
Okay, so we always do the first slide as the strategic plan, the one that our students guessed, helped us create, and the one we live by. So, our strategic plan, all our goals, and most of all the things we do come from there. The next slide shows our goals, so here's our goals for... You can advance. So our goals for 2018-19, one was to improve mental health supports for students. That went to strategic goal 3C. We contracted with St. Clair's for Valley View, and we have plans to increase for 19, 20, and Lakeview and Riverview. We also were recipients of the National School of Character for Riverview and Lakeview. And we are planning to do it... I wrote 19, 20, but it might be the next year, depending on, you know, we're getting our feet back on the ground over there, so we'll see. Number two, investigating, prepare a plan for potential student population growth. So we are working with our demographer, township, and EI, a plan for increases. And we are working, we are investigating the viability of using St. Mary's Prep as a lease, since it did close at the end of the school year. Number three was to obtain future-ready status for, that's the technology goal. That went to 1A, 1B, and 1C. We had committees that were formed, the application was filed on June, by June 30 deadline. And we'll receive our certification if we're fortunate enough to be certified in September of 2019. And then, increased achievement for all students who are not meeting grade level benchmarks, which was goals 2A, 3D. And we did training with in-house coaches and outside professional development. And Riverview and Lakeview ended up at the top of our comparison group. At 1.5, top 1.5% of all schools in the state. And Valley View ended up in the middle of our comparison group. Next goal, next slide? So, Dr. Cullis and I worked through these things, and we talked about suggested goals for next year. And we'd like to keep, basically keep all three goals and continue working on them. The first one, actually just go from four to three. The first one is to increase achievement for all students who are not meeting grade level benchmarks. We will always be doing that, and we want to focus on math this year. We want to have a strong focus on our math grade, our math scores. And obviously planning for enrollment growth, continue that. And to expand the social-emotional learning program. You had, there was one more goal, and that was to create and implement a community relations program. And now, the last slide just says discussion and the O E suggestions. I guess we could do that after we do your part, right?
Okay.
Then we talk about what goals we want to set.
Sure.
So this is Charlene Peterson from the New Jersey School Board Association.
Hello, can you be here, everyone? Appreciate the opportunity to be here and to be, you know, part of the work that we do every year at this whole setting meeting. And you know, one of the things that your board have practiced, that your board has continued to do, is to fill out the board's self-evaluation. And you know, saying that it used to be required by the state that this was something board's tendency. And then about five or six years ago, the board relaxed that requirement. And now those boards should continue to fill it out. Do it because it's a good governance practice. If you're holding the rest of the district accountable, this is how you hold yourselves accountable. And take a step back and reflect on the work that you've done for the past year. So, you know, this year, six of the seven board members filled it out. You know, when you evaluate yourself over nine categories. And as we looked at it, it totaled what the average score that the board rated itself on the board areas. The board's average score on a 4.0 scale was a 3.2. The lowest that the board evaluated itself, a 3.0, was in board and community. And the highest that the board evaluated itself was a 3.5 in board performance. So I hope to see what we did last year. So last year, the board's average score was a 3.3, so you're pretty close to where you, you know, were last year. But one of the things that, you know, I don't know if you've noticed it, and for those of you that have been on the board for a while, that I feel like you can see in this board self-evaluation, that the board is really growing. And the board's really working together as a team. And I feel like when some of the comments that I read, that you've written about the work that you do, you're recognizing those things that we hope to see. You're accomplishing things because you're working together as a team. And you're talking about policy, you're talking about, you know, you recognize not, you know, running the district on a day-to-day basis. So all of those things that we want, or we hope that boards are doing and recognizing are important, are things that I feel like now seeing in your board self-evaluation. And that you as a board are starting to recognize it, and tell them that about yourselves and the work that you're doing. So sometimes you're just up here all the time, and you don't really take that step back and say, you know, we're deaf in here. We're figuring out that this is what we're supposed to be doing. And we're staying focused on the things that we're supposed to be focused on. And I feel like I see that in this board self-evaluation. So that should be a compliment to you as a group and the work that you're doing together. So just as we look through it, the first page is what you value as a board. So one of the things we always look for from the Jersey School Boards is how would you rate student achievement? Recognizing that that should be the most important thing that as a board you should value and focus your time on. So here again, we can look and see that you're rated that a 4.0, the highest rating that it needs to anything.
Excuse me. I don't understand the difference between value and board.
Okay. So the value score is just as a group, how important do we think this is to the work that we do? And then the board's boards are taking each one of these categories and looking at different components of that and saying, how do we actually do? So basically saying, if we say this is important, then I should expect to see that the work that the board is focusing its priorities and focusing its energies on things that it says are important. So what is that?
The first question on the evaluation, what's the value?
That's where we get the letter A one.
Correct.
And then the bluish, the dark blue one is all the rest of the pages.
Correct. The cumulative planning was 3.1, so that's a blue graph, bar graph.
Thank you. Apologize for the interruption.
That's a good question. So as we, as we go through it, go to page two and look at planning. You know, here again, I think that, you know, the board has recognized the importance of, you know, using the strategic plan, the importance of involving the stakeholders in the process, and looking at how that drives the work that you do. And I think, you know, it's important to see here tonight, as we're talking about what our annual district goals, what our annual one-year goals are going to be, how it supports the strategic plan, how it comes from the strategic plan, and helps move the plan forward. So that's, you know, what we're, that's the intent, what we should do. It's how we keep the strategic plan from not just being something that sits on the shelf, but how we actually make it come to life. And the way we make it come to life is by tying it into these annual goals. And then using that, and what I can work if we do, recognizing that they're going to be something that, you know, we were not based with, that at the time we did the plan, that wasn't even some, that wasn't a reality that we were facing at the time. So we need to combine those things that we can take out of the plan with what your realities are now, and put them together as, you know, those things that we need to focus on for coming here.
Excuse me, can I ask? So I have one more question. On the board to individual, on chart two and chart three, the y-axis goes up to 3.5. There's a couple of things that top out as 3.5. Is that because they topped out at 3.5, or should we go to four?
It should go.
One thing, if you don't mind, Charlie, that I want to ask you.
Absolutely, this is your conversation, your discussion, your board self-evaluation, so.
Thank you. So under planning, one thing I do notice, and I just wanted to kind of make sure that Ash Charlene, and also make sure that we have consensus from the board, and so, you know. The last comment about we as a board have not put together a formal action plan. I always thought that he set the goal, and that action plan of how that goal's going to be accomplished is for the administration, the CSA, and his staff to come up with that action plan. Is that correct?
That's correct.
At least for district goals, right?
Right, that's, I was just gonna say, you could do, as a board, if you chose to take your board goal and go through a similar action plan process that the administration uses for the district goals, you know, that you would be welcome to do that, to kind of help make sure that you do have a plan in place to accomplish your board goal. Because that's probably the area where I sometimes will see boards set a board goal, and then they don't ever really do anything about it. They don't really report out about it. They don't really, you know, have a plan of how they're going to accomplish it. So this might be a way to kind of hold yourself to the same, what you would expect of the administration, expect of yourself. Take your board goals, maybe you can, you know, set it to whatever committee it's applicable to, and say, okay, lay out a plan for this. And then in whatever process, you know, maybe it was order, however, the administration reports out on the district goals, you should hold yourselves accountable to also report out on your board goals and say, how are we doing? What have we accomplished so far, what are we working on? And kind of keep that in front of you to help drive your work too.
Yeah, that's definitely an area that I, I'll take the blame for not following up on our board goal.
I think everybody's nodding their head.
Yeah. I think that's an opportunity for us to get much better. And it's something I think we've, over the years, often struggled with, figuring out a way to do that. One of the things I thought about as I went through this was, and I don't want to form a lot more committees, but it's not a committee, I think, it may be, by the way, just a committee, as part of a committee. In other words, if it's a, if it's an IMP goal, then the IMP committee might have a subcommittee of that goal to be able to, like you said, report out on it. You know, wouldn't, actually wouldn't, I mean, the administration is certainly invited to that. But where the administration often runs an IMP meeting, that should be run by us as a board. So it's, we'll talk about committee structure and some of the things I've been thinking about as I went through this planning, but I think that's a potential opportunity for us to think about as we go through tonight.
Well, and yeah, and that should be, the, the, the whole purpose of doing this is for you to look at these types of things. And, you know, similar to the way we would say to the rest of the district, even though we recognize that we are doing things pretty well here, we want to continue to get better and continue to improve in the work that we do. So, you know, here to a point where we're just picking little things here, and, you know, we don't have any big structural things, but how can we do a better job at the work that we're already doing well?
The, one of the policies on the first meeting tonight deals with board communication to the public too. So it's, it's a good time, if you, if you want to continue that collection, we actually have some of the things in place prior to the school year starting. Because there was no, really no discussion about board social media. Now there is, that's part of the communication.
And one of the things I like to do as we go through this, guys, is I like to figure out the things that we kind of rate ourselves, and each of us individually, high, low. I mean, the high is just a, hey, I think we're doing really well, just let's keep going. But the low, more importantly, is, hey, here's an opportunity for us as we're going through the night. So I look on this one, and I say, reduce action plans developed to support goals. So I just wanted to ask everybody, when we say that, are we talking about action plans from the administration for the goals that we've given them? Is that what we're looking for, we're up?
Am I right in thinking that that would really only be in the beginning of the year? Like, we set the goal, they give us the action plan, and as long as we're proceeding accordingly with the goal, do we need to review it again?
So in this district, we, from this meeting, the next meeting will be the resolution approved goals. Once the goals are approved, which I love if we approve the goals tonight, which doesn't give us time, but because we let the house down.
We were in official two weeks.
I see. So, so, forget that. So we have, we have the goals approved, and then we create action plans. In the interim, maybe we'll do a draft or something. And then what we normally do is we do a check-in sometime November, and then another one in early spring, and then the last one would be basically right now.
So that's what we've done. Is there suggestions on doing that differently, or how better to handle it? Or are we okay with it? I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to make more work for us, but it was a 2.7, which was by far the lowest. In fact, no one marked that as commendable, zero. So if there's an opportunity for us to give advice to the administration on how we'd like to see that?
I think it's too much, that's probably what you're thinking. Probably, probably gets so much of it that you, that you can't, you can't really grasp what it is. Because we give you so much of us, so much work. So many action plans, updates between, between the three of people's merit goals and the district goals. You're getting, you're getting action plans, you know, basically at least three times a year after we develop. And we post them all online too. So it is just too much.
So when I read this, I'm, I'm thinking, is this, is this worded in a way that, as, as Charlene mentioned, creating an action plan that the board has to follow instead of the administration has to follow? Or what's the administration's action plan? So I'm reading this more as, do we need to develop a board action plan to be better at our jobs? Right, I mean, I, because we're not here to be involved with the daily operations, right? We're here to set policies and guidelines so that the administration can follow, so that we achieve whatever goals, you know, whatever perceived goals that we're looking at, whether it's from the perspective of the administration or the district. So now, I'm trying to, trying to piece my mind into figuring out, how as a board would we create an action plan so that we make sure that we, as a board, succeed and get all fours across the board? Is it a board group? Right, I mean, is that, is that how I'm, is that how you're perceiving it, Mike, or is that how it was?
Yeah, I mean, if it's, if it's a matter of our board goal, that's one thing. If it's a matter of district goals, if it's the board goals, I 100% agree, we gotta do better job with it, period. I mean, we, the last few years, I think we've, we've fumbled the ball on, on our board goal. I mean, we only gave her some of them.
Well, I mean, for, for me, the, the one example is, is the finance committee, right? I mean, we had a long discussion, I think, in the last meeting about the tables. I don't know if it was two meetings ago. But it was something that the committee discussed, but we as a committee didn't feel it was a hot topic. And then, so when we discussed it during the regular session, it became a bigger topic than I thought. So now the question is, how do we as a committee function better so that we can preemptively address a lot of these issues that some people may perceive as issues? And so that's how I see that as sort of an action plan, you know, it's a finance committee. How do we better communicate so that we address a lot of the concerns preemptively before it becomes, you know?
Yeah. So I think your thing is similar to what I was thinking as we went through, looked at this, was, board, I, I think we've got an issue with our communication from our committees to the board. And I think part of the problem is that is email. Because we are required with email and shared driving, files and files and files and files. And Steve just said two, right? So, and Steve and I were just talking before the meeting, and one of the things he suggested was, and I'm a little bit into the details here, but that's okay, because our goal is to get goals out of the meeting. I think a board goal might be to revamp the committee structure and communication. And I think one of the ways might, an action plan might be to, instead of doing committee reports, or in addition maybe to doing committee reports on, you know, as a report we send out on email, is that during our work sessions, we've got a work session every month, that, and this was Steve's suggestion, was that, you know, when we get to, you know, no action to be taken for IMP, you go through the IMP committee. Because by the way, that's also going to answer a lot of the questions on the resolutions, because that's what we talk about. So I think that's a good suggestion, and I think that hopefully we'll initiate discussion during our work session, so that when we get to regular session, we're good, we can move forward. But now we're getting a little bit into the details. But I think, I mean, does anybody else feel that the action plan developed and support the goals from the administration for district goals, we have an opportunity, or is, are we pretty good with it? Good?
Yeah, I'd say, so I'd give that a four. I didn't give it a five, only, I mean, I feel like we need a lot of information. Obviously tying the action steps in, including goals, just how we, you know, that's a great setup. We get a lot of detail. I guess my own, why I didn't give it a four, was because I feel like, and more on me, is that I'm kind of missing detail about, you know, there's, there's a lot, and I don't feel like I'm getting those. Because I'm losing the forest of the tree. I don't know the answer to that. That's kind of my overall feeling about this. I just felt like I've not, I don't have my head around the whole thing all the time.
Well, and that's a common thing that I hear a lot from boards, of saying, okay, you know, we have this goal, we get this information about, you know, all kinds of information that comes at us, but at some point, like, I just need to know, are we 25% through the goal? Are we 50% through the goal? Are we almost there? Are we working on it? Like, just kind of wrap it up and let me know where we're at and where we're heading, and make sure that I understand that. And a lot of times boards say, I just know I've got all this information. I know you've shared all this stuff with me about the goal, but I can't assimilate it and put it all together into one just small package that gives me this one message about where we are.
It's a lot of work there. It's not necessarily, you know, we only have so much time in the day, we look at, at a lot of stuff.
So I think, I, I think if we just mentally focus on, we really want to evaluate the action plans from the administration, and if we have questions, let's ask, because they've got the information. I think the problem is they don't ask questions then, and then we get to an update, and we're like, wait a second, what was the action plan? I mean, I, I'm sorry, because we, like you said, we get so much information.
I just don't have any information.
Yeah, I agree. I think we just don't ask the questions then. And I think if we all just mentally agree to say, when we get those action plans from administration, we're gonna really take a look, and if we have questions, let's ask them. Let's make sure we're clear on, on what the administration is doing, if we have suggestions or ideas, or things that we have concerns about, let's break them up then, so that when we get the updates, they're truly updates.
I don't know about you guys, but I feel like when it comes to Steve Damaris and Dr. Cullis's goals, their personal goals, I feel like we kind of get that update, okay, I've done X, Y, and Z. Now I'm about halfway to, I'm three quarters through, I've met the goal. I feel that way about those. I don't know what's different about that versus our district goals. I don't feel the same way about those. Although, again, it's not a question on the administration, we get a ton of information. I just don't feel like it's as directly related or as easy to quantify, maybe? And I don't know if there's a way to change that, it's just...
Yeah, that's, that's interesting, because the merit goals are normally pretty quantifiable. And the other goals are a little bit more vague, but normally what I do is I, I tell you, like, the progress has been made. Did these three steps. I don't really say whether it's 50%, I don't know.
Sure, I mean, it's hard to...
Hard to, I'm, but I do say, like, you know, this, then these three steps are done, and we should all go over the other three.
Some districts will even take them and color code the actual plans, and, you know, green, what's done already, yellow, what's in progress, and red, what you haven't started yet. So the board can just glance at it and know exactly what's, you know, what's, what's done and what's in progress.
The, just, just so that I'm clear on this, reviewing the action plans developed to support the goals is intended to be about the, not just the merit goals for the administration, but also for the district goals, right? Is it supposed to be for, for all goals that we are, that we deal with?
I'm sorry, I didn't know what you were asking me.
I was, I was asking, I just happened to finish looking at you, and so, it wasn't specifically you that you...
Sorry.
I was looking at it the way that you put it, yes. I don't know if anybody else...
The, the comment that seems to be causing the, the discussion was, was for me. I don't, I don't actually feel like that it would be as important to put together a formal action plan. I mean, you know, we get the stuff from Steve and Damaris and Sandy, and we have our board goals. But I, I don't think we have an action plan for our board goals. And I also, for the, for the, for the merit goals, I feel that we don't get, like, we don't, we don't review the action plans, we get, we get reminded of them. It's less a review and more being reminded when somebody says, hey, I've finished this one. And Steve is very good about this. He says, hey, I've got this done, and he has everything updated when he sends it out. So I feel like it's less us reviewing action plans and more the P, the administration appraising us of... It's more like, hey, okay, it's incidental that we see the rest of the stuff that's going on. It's not the goal of what's going on. It's not, I, we're not actually reviewing something. Am I making myself clear? It's, it's, I feel like we're, it's more of a coincidence that we're reviewing stuff rather than something that we really need to remember, read, to read up on.
So part of the problem is basically goals.
Yeah, there's a lot of goals.
I mean, because we've got the board goal, we've got district goals, we've got merit goals, there is a super set. Yeah, I mean, and, and we've talked about this, and, you know, we're trying to head down a path to reduce the amount of merit goals to keep the value the same, but the contract is not at a point where I think we can tip the scales yet, and we still have another... I gotta take a look back at Steve when we redid his contract, because I thought we set it up to eventually be able to keep the dollar figure the same or reduce the number of goals. Or just put down more dollars in each goal.
Fewer than all of us.
But I'll take a look at it. So if we have the ability to do that, I, I agree with reducing the amount of goals, because I think that's the problem, like, wait a second, was that? The reason why we didn't, don't do our board goal, to be honest with you guys, is there's so many goals, there's so much stuff we have to do. It's not like we're not doing things, we're just running out of time in the day to do it.
Why do we need to help the board?
We don't have to. I think we often do the goal, we just don't create an action plan on how to do it, it just half hasn't.
Well, it's not, I mean, you see that at the time that superintendent, the superintendent, the P A put in to their goals. You know, you have the goal, you have the objectives, you have the action plan, you have controls, it's like you're, you're a manager on one here. Based on business, so it's a lot of time, it's a lot of work. So you're gonna have a board goal here, which we did achieve, create an collective relations program. You know, we'll have to sit down either at a meeting, or several subcommittees, and, you know, got the goal together, you know, check out the action plan, it takes a lot of time. And you're gonna have to record all that, pretty much see how, how we're doing. So it's, it's, it's a lot of work. But I think we should, I didn't even remember what some goals were going back, you know, my history on the board. I think many of the board is, make sure the district is, which I think we did. And, you know, my management point, I put it here, you know, when, when we had presentations on the goals, the administrators, and gave their light, too, I think they gave a pretty good job on my side of the board, indicating the status of goals and where we are on. And, you know, if you have questions during the meeting, you can let them out. More so the leaders, than the committee, so, so, which makes it time to leave, so, so, there's only other ways to do the relations.
So, you know, some other feedback we've been getting too from the committee is asking districts to do a better job of aligning their goals. So that the, the merit goal should support what the district goals are rather than, than being completely different goals that have nothing to do with one another. But try and not keep the superintendent going in too many different directions, and try and pick a focus and stay aligned to that focus. So find a way to try and make the merit goals help support, you know, an extension of what the district goals are, and keep and maintain that same focus.
But, so, isn't that...
But, so, isn't that in contrast to what the idea of merit goal is, meaning that shouldn't the merit goal be above and beyond?
Right, but, but not a whole completely different, you know, topic? Like, try and take that same topic and add an expectation than what you normally, you know, would expect as part of the job, and then, you know, make them aligned to work where it's possible. For just that reason of them finding that, that other boards are saying the same thing that you're saying tonight, that there's just too many goals and too many different directions, and kind of we do a better job of picking a direction and aligning all the work that we do to that direction. Okay, um, move on to policy then. So here, I think, you know, the board did a good job of basically saying that it recognizes that it's a policymaking body, that it recognizes that we, you know, avoid the day-to-day operation of the district, that that's the work of the administration, and I, you know, and the comments basically have, you know, supported the fact that as a board, you feel like you're doing a better job of that, you're doing a better job of, you know, reviewing the policies. You know, somebody mentioned that you're starting to use the policies more in part discussion at the meetings, and referring to policies, and making sure that you're staying updated on it. So these are, you know, these are all the things that policy should be doing, this is the work we should be doing, like, to help, you know, guide, you know, the direction. Do you have any questions or thoughts or things that stood out to you about this area? And if someone made a comment or a question about something about the regulations or the procedures and wanted to add more clarity about the regulations or procedures?
Yeah, and that's the area, I think, we had zero commendable, five good, one adequate, was ensure the administration develops appropriate procedures and regulations to implement the board's policies, board's policy intent. I think my, my question is, so we create a policy, but we also have regulations. Right? So these different regulations you're talking about? Those, the regulations are almost word for word, often, the policy, right?
Or it's, it's like, it's a little more detailed sometimes, but in some cases, it varies. It's almost like, in our district, I know you don't have to build it, in our district, all policies are board-approved, too. So I know I don't have to board approve a lot of the...
Or the regulations.
Regulations, I think, I'm sorry. All policies have to be board-approved, not all regulations.
No, only mandated, only state mandated regulations have to be approved by the board, the other ones are considered to be the work of the administration.
So we approve them anyway, so that everybody is out there, and so we've got the backing of the board.
So I guess the question to me then is, the part that says, ensure that the administration develops appropriate procedures, so let's forget about regulations for a second, let's just say procedures. How do boards do that? In other words, are there written procedures that the administration comes up with for every policy made up of the board?
I mean, so there just needs to be a way for the administration to take the policy that the board has passed, take it back to the team, and say, okay, you know, what do we need to do to help make decisions around this? How is, you know, what's missing from here to give us the guidance we need on a day-to-day basis? And then it's up to the administration to determine, is there enough in this policy that gives us the direction we need? Or do we need to take this and break this down a little bit further, so that when a staff member, you know, is involved in a situation in this policy, that they have that, that step-by-step, or have that guidance that they, they need in order to implement this policy?
I think one example could be, we, there's something like 15 policies that all, that all staff have to be trained on every year. So one of the ways to go about that is by doing a, a principal statement of assurance they've gone through, always state the first thing in school with their, with their staff members, and that the policies are available, and everybody can click that. That would be a procedure, not a policy, because a procedure is how, how are we getting the information to them? Another, another example of procedures could be, we have policies and regulations on, on staff evaluation, but there's a lot of procedures in place that we have on how we're actually, how we're actually doing that.
So I guess the, so, first of all, thanks for the clarification on the regulations, because I, I know you've said that before, but I didn't remember it until now. So I guess that's a way that we do ensure the administration develops appropriate regulations, because we approve those, right?
Right.
So, um, that's number one. I guess the second part of that is, if we don't have a regulation for a policy, how do other boards ensure that the administration develops appropriate procedures for that policy? And is there, like, is there a procedure meant, and it seems like, it seems like you guys are killing it, but, I mean, how do we ensure that? That's the question, that's the word that I'm...
Any of us sitting here...
That's the word, no, it's not.
Yes.
Maybe, I, I think that's probably the words to look at, because I looked and said, how do I ensure that?
Obviously, yeah, you guys see, you're doing great. How do I ensure? Right, and I've read your article.
That would be tough, I mean, talk about how much more paperwork you could get if I gave you, like, a... But I think, it sounds horrible, but it's probably, you'd probably find out if we weren't killing it, because we'd probably...
What sample that is quantitative sample, policy provided, one physical every two years, we require one physical every year, that's implemented in series policies. Same thing with other issues, policy samples, or in checks, that's another example. Your plan for each check probably to use that, though, would require to be newer human basis. So we don't implement policies in series internally, on a regular basis.
I don't think anybody sitting here thinks that you don't, it's just, until you've just said that, I don't know that there's a procedure that would allow for voice checking.
Ensure, certainly.
Yeah, and actually, the other part of this, I don't like the smart shit, I'm looking at it, because, honestly, because it's appropriate procedures. I don't want to even know who wrote that, right?
Yeah, I think it's, I, so, I, I guess we could, we could move on, guys, because I think we're all coming down to, I felt the same way, like, ensure, how do I ensure? Like, and how do I ensure for every single policy? Am I going through the policy, I mean, there's, okay, and the regulations part, that was a good reminder, so, let's move on from there. If anybody wants to dwell on that.
So that's one, just an achievement then. And here, again, you know, so again, so that's an area that, you know, if, if we look at the comments, the board's saying, you know, that this is important, that this is, you know, make sure, you're saying that you get data, you get updates, and, you know, Ford, you've said that the board was commendable, I thought was good, in using the expertise of the professional staff in the development of the curriculum. The one area the board looked like it was kind of a little, you know, uncertain about itself is, am I aware of the community's aspirations, educational aspirations? And a couple of people may, or I think somebody made a comment, like, I'm not sure that I, I am aware, and I'm not sure how I, you know, how we go about doing that. Right, you know, so part of that is, you know, that was part of what we gained in the whole strategic planning process, of bringing everybody in and let them tell us what's important to them, and let them tell us what they see your school district looking like five years from now. So then that's how then we can take what they tell us, and use that in the work, you know, that we do. So there should be, you know, continued opportunities to, you know, have the community can tell us what's important.
Is it not yet, John?
That, you know, we, it shouldn't be once every three or four or five years that we ask the community, what do you like, what, you know... So there's, you know, there'd be different ways of engaging with the community to make sure that we're aware of what's important to them.
Maybe when we get into detail later, we'll ask them to examine this stuff.
Well, and then to go back to your goal that you have set for yourself, so as a board of how you would see yourself doing that, because again, every community is different, and what that looks like is different. Um, okay?
Yeah, I mean, I was, I gotta tell you, I was a little surprised to see us rank low in there, because I agree. I mean, just a couple of years ago, we had a lot of people come in for a strategic planning, spent a lot of time putting these goals together, and these goals are what drive our district goals to kind of flow downward. So, you know...
But at the same time, actually, who's on the board now? Who is actually there, just to bring us, sort of, who else is? I was there for every session. But, okay, you were on, you were on the board then, yeah, oh, so there were four of us on the board at that point.
I see how it is, it's easier for you.
I was there, it's whatever time. Oh, no, I'm not even, I'm sorry.
So maybe, maybe that's a good point, we came up with a five-year strategic plan, is there a check-in? And how do we do that?
We need five years...
And I think that just goes back to, that's, I guess what I was alluding to, that I think we should revisit this when we talk about the goal that we didn't meet this year, and if we want to develop a book ourselves for this coming year, and if that should be factored.
And, and I will say that I wish we had more people that came to our meetings. However, in some ways, I hope and believe the reason they don't is because we're satisfied with, like, the educational operations that we continue as a board and as an administration to put forth. So hopefully, that's a sign, but that's not the only way to, we need to be more proactive. We can't just reactively say, well, nobody's complaining, so we're gonna...
It must be okay.
Right, and we're pretty much, I'm telling boards, right, that don't do that, don't, don't make that assumption, don't...
Yeah.
Because they're not coming to you, then we should figure out a way to come to that, you know, which just by you, you know, videoing this meeting is a way to do that, but, you know, recognizing that, like you said, we, we still have to get our message out, and it's important that the message comes from us, rather than you responding to whatever the community's saying. You want to make sure that the community's responding to what you're saying, or how you can get press.
Remember, during the school year, not so much the summer, but we do have different programs here, where we bring, we bring the public in, because we have, right, each school does a presentation, sometimes we have a club do a presentation with athletics, so we do get, you know, we've had a place filled pretty much all the way, right?
Yeah, it's, apparently, you were only there to see their kids, to stand up in front and get, get the order, whatever. Nobody ever stays to...
It is, it's just five minutes, you know?
Yeah, they're, they're here for, they see some...
They won't be able to stay over yet, because it would take a long night.
Do you, do you have a lot of districts using social media to ask questions like that? Are there surveys here?
Um, the, well, districts, are a lot of districts do surveys, yes. Social media is usually, again, you know, that's kind of, can be an unwieldy thing that does, it's have to figure out the right way to, to use that as a tool, rather than...
That's one way, and our board's saying that, it's not, it's not for back and forth.
So one thing, I think that, and part of it is the, all of us on the board are pretty humble, that we go to a lot of activities out in the community, and I've, I've been guilty of it. I've walked up to principal at Riverview, or Valley View, or wherever I go to go to a public event and say, hey, don't, please don't announce everybody, thanks, Mike Anderson for coming. I hated to, but the way we're, that, when they do that, I get engaged with the community. Somebody will grab me afterward and talk to us or something. So I think we need to, as much as we want to be humble and sit in the back and don't make ourselves known, because we don't want to be like, oh, yeah, it's Mike Anderson, the board member, or Dino Capello, or Laura Griggin, the board member. I, I think we need to put ourselves out there more, because people are gonna look and say, oh, so, so he's here from the board, and he grabbed him or talked to him. So I think it's an opportunity for us, because we're all kind of, we don't do this for the publicity of doing it, we do it for the right reasons, but I think we lose an opportunity to be out there in front of the community. You didn't not agree?
I, I still want to reserve the right to be a parent sometimes.
I'm not saying if you go over a parent, but I've gone to a lot of things where I showed up as not a parent, and just stood in the back, at a kindergarten show or something like that, and I've been like, this is basically, you know, I'm just, I'm just here to kind of be a, a wallflower, like, you're just one of the...
If you're there for something else.
Yes, yeah, if you're going as a board member, not if you're going as Dino Capello, parrot grantee, or something like that. Yeah, agreed, agreed.
Okay, good. And I think that the same thing came out, you know, in the board and community section, you know, it said that was the lowest section that the board rated as well, and I think that was kind of a consistent conversation here. The next section then is finance. So here, you know, then, for the most part, you know, the board recognized, I guess, its responsibility to the community, recognizing, you know, that you are kind of one group that has to balance, um, what the needs of the community in terms of, you know, what the community can afford, and making sure that you're giving your students the best education that your community can afford. So for the, the most part, you know, the board seemed that it, you know, recognized that responsibility, talked about the, the work that, you know, something said was a strength for the board, um, you know, there was a comment, someone asked, I guess, at the, one of the last comments, talking about the budgets, and maybe more the need for a check-in about it, and, um... But for the most part, most of it seems to be kind of recognizing that the board has to handle a lot of this area.
Yeah, I mean, the one thing I would say is, I know it was coming down here, that, that once we finalize the budget, it kind of just flows along. Um, I think we do have a lot of check-ins on it. I mean, first of all, the finance committee, and I know this was something Don had pushed for, was to do kind of a budget to actual, well, we on track?
Right, right.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's a regular basis, and then you gotta be approved more checks. Which, you know, I, I agree, I mean, I think the problem is, is we get into the details of the checklist, the bills list, as opposed to, when Don brought this, did a great job bringing this up, is, hey, well, we need, we need, well, I don't need to know check number 7577 is for $120 to, you know, Rockaway Auto for fixing the bus. I need to know, are we on track with how much we're spending in our bus maintenance account or budget line item? So Don's done a good job with the finance committee on doing that, so we need to get that, maybe that goes back to the communication from the committees, because I think, and I only know that after I was on finance, so I probably realize that more from being on finance than going through the minutes. So once again, I think this goes back to maybe the communication from the committees and the board, but tell me if I'm wrong, guys, I don't want, I'm not trying to drive this, try to, I guess, and ideas.
Well, one of, one of the thoughts that I had is, you know, even before I started my term, sitting out there, looking at the agenda, trying to figure out, you know, what you guys are discussing and what you're talking about, it's not clear-cut, and there's no, there's no sync between the, the agenda and, like, the finance section with the actual committee meeting minutes, and, you know, anything. And a thought that just occurred to me, can we start off the meetings, instead of putting the committee reports at the end, which we rarely discuss, have an opportunity, like, after maybe the, you know, Maris's section to, you know, business administrative comments, maybe have committee comments to, you know, give an opportunity to discuss the minutes of each agenda, so that when it comes to the actual minutes, that it's, there's less conversation, less concern, less sort of conflict, and more open discussions that there could be a way to address, or even announce, okay, we're, we're on par for, or on schedule for our budget, and things like that, and whatnot, or give us warnings. That's a, I'm wondering if we can discuss committee meeting minutes before, you know, actually.
My suggestion would be to do it throughout the agenda when we get on the work session, throughout the agenda, as we get to instruction program, where it's no action to be taken, but there's a bunch of things to discuss. The first thing you discuss, before you discuss, there's gonna be, at the next meeting, myself or somebody I coach like myself, will move items one through 10, to say, here's a committee report, read it out loud. That way, and, and discuss, if there's discussion to be had, let's discuss it, because I think then when you go through the motions, you're like, oh, yeah, that's part of the committee report. Agreed, is that...
Yeah, I mean, that's, I, I could see a lot of different permutations or ways of incorporating that. I agree, there's, there's a lot more room to communicate and, and, and discuss the specific items that you mentioned, like, instead of each individual check, a more generalized update of what's going on with the finance committee, and where we are in terms of our budget, and so...
Um, we do have a bylaw that says the exact way that has to be done, so we do have to change that, this, 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 this actually tells you, like, where it is set. We can change it, which is, that's what it is.
Yes. Wow.
Hope for your turn, huh?
Yeah.
But I think that's a really good point, I think we, you know, we sit here during a work session, and we read all these, you know, paperless in front of us, and that we've already read, and nobody else is reading, so instead, maybe we can change it, so that we read the minutes, and we're discussing those, and then how they relate to the agenda items.
We're one of the only districts that has no action to be taken, like, so, I think we talk about the things that are going on there, but not both, like, committee report, and the committee report would reflect it, and how it comes in and out. Then just don't read to... report reflects it, how it comes in, how it goes. Then just don't read to all...
Yes, absolutely.
Agree. Just take committee report and hear, anybody have any questions on the 10 items that are on the agenda for next meeting?
I think that, I've been saying that for a few years. And I think it's a pretty, a pretty good thing if you guys do decide to have committee reports at the meeting, it'll be at the work session. It doesn't really have to be in the beginning of the meeting, because, because you're not really going down too many things. And if you like emergent things at the committee, at the first session, right? So you don't have to do it that way. But if you want to do it because you think that the more important part of the meeting, you should be one everybody's fresh, that, that makes sense. So we just, somebody let me know if you want to put that on the agenda for the next two meetings to change that.
When's our next plan?
We didn't set one yet. It'll be sometime, if we can do it or not in August. Imagine doing it before the board meeting, just to start with expectations.
But that, that is a good practice. You know, so the whole purpose of the, you know, the committee's doing the board's work. So the committee needs to come back and recommend to the board, you know, how the board should proceed with its work. So the board needs to know what the committee's recommending before the board does its work. So it is important to have that information first before you...
One of the things that I have noticed is that, at least I think is a thing, is that there's a large amount of trust, both amongst the board members and towards the administration. There's a lot of stuff on these, on these agendas. And we frequently don't ask more than, you know, there's, there's 10, 10 items on an agenda, and we will ask maybe two or three questions about it. I think that either shows that people are doing their homework and reading up and asking the questions ahead of time, or they trust that the people who are in the committees know what they're talking about and are going with the recommendations, and they trust that the superintendent, the rest of the administration's doing the same thing. And from what I have been told, previous superintendents and boards have not shared that same kind of trust. And there was a great deal of difficulty with that. Is there, is there some truth to that, Don?
Any other question?
Previous, previous boards have not shared a similar amount of trust with each other and with the previous superintendents. Is there, is there truth to that?
I don't think so. I mean, you know, when you have certain people and, when I got here, H2R new superintendent, we had a interim superintendent who we proceeded to hire. So yes, there's a sort of opinion. And I think it was, I think overall, we're, you know, we're, we're together, but it was best for the, for the district. You know, the committees, you know, a lot of times I've been in committee before, I understand something or had a question on something, I call the committee chairman and say, you know, what about this? Am I at fault still? So I thought the communication was pretty good, the committee structure back then. We don't get the committee reports, so some questions on there, I think I'm calling, sending emails to the committee chair, ask, you know, ask the question. You know, we, we talked about doing the committee reports. Some of the agenda we did at the beginning or at the end, you know, you had the opportunity to talk about the committee reports. The obvious process was sit down, run it down, buddy. You know, we did a short enough time than what the report's supposed to be done after committee. It was a little better success than the past. You know, paid a lot of time to digest it and ask the question that they wanted. And I think a lot of times too, we highlight some of the things that was committee days, so many important things, especially around budget time, or the finance agenda. So a lot of the things to be addressed.
Cool. I can tell you one of the things, I think the struggles that we're having are similar struggles that I see I had at my work. And one of the things we implemented was do less with less. This was literally from our CEO. He's like, do less with less. Do more important things. Don't, you know, and, and it's funny, you did this to me in the background, this song he says, "I've got everything I need and nothing that I don't." I think we have a lot that we don't need. And I think that we can't filter through that stuff to really see what's important. And I think that's what's coming through, at least in my mind, though, we're talking about from everything tonight so far, is we got a whole lot of papers here. Really, we need like one that's got our important things that we need to focus on, so.
We talked about policies before. When I first came on board, I'm not lying, I had two huge, bustling notebooks. Eighteen, twenty boards just stuck with paper. And you get another day, paper, you have the old technology back on my first floor. And so, I mean, to be an expert on all of us, to be a board member and to be savvy at every single policy there, it's essential and possible. As long as you know where to look it up, our paper components, what's the superintendent or this financial agency, the business administrator, to get an answer. You just can't be an expert on everything. The best material we get to, to read and go over before the meetings, it's all, it's all the information you get, all of them, the Jersey School Works Association, which do a good job, especially, you know, he gets up today on the legislative items that are, that eventually you affect especially financially. So I think you gotta try to keep your eye on the real board. You just can't get down to the beach and be an expert on everything. Remodels for everything. I don't think that's very important, you know, ourselves.
Okay. Move on to board operations thing. And it's kind of, again, ties in, part of what board operations is, is asking how effective are we feel our governance structure is, which is our committee structure, and saying, you know, does that work for you? Does that provide you the information that you need? Is it lessening the total work on the entire board by having a structure in place? And I think that for the most part, the board has pretty much said that yes, our committee system is working for us. And, you know, one of the things that I always look at on top is number two, where it says, talks about providing a climate that allows for free and open discussion by all members. Because I think that that's, that's going to do your work. But I think it's important that all of you should feel that you have the, you know, you're free to say what you want to say, when you want to say it. And then, you know, you have a climate that allows you to do that. So I think it's important, you know, again, that your board recognizing that that is the case here. So again, if we look at, you know, again, if I look at the comments and saw a lot of people saying, you know, board works well together. Committees are giving us the opportunity to vet and look at things. You know, but again, I think it came back to, you know, communication that we talked about, that someone had mentioned that committees can do a better job of communicating the work that it does. So I think we've already talked about how we can do that better, just like committees recording Ellen Green here. I don't know if there's more, we're hoping or looking for from that communication aspect, but. Okay. Then the next section is board performance. And this is the area that the board evaluated itself the highest, both this year and last year. The area where the board gave itself a 3.25. And then as you look through it, you know, it pretty much, I kind of drew a line between the, like, good and minimal, and almost all of the responses are coming on that side of the line, you know, versus on the other side of the line, if you look at the way that the board evaluated itself in this area. And again, this is, you know, this is an area of strength for the board. The next section then is board and superintendent relationship checks. And here again, probably the same thing, that, you know, the board, most of, how the board evaluated itself is either good or minimal, and almost all of them, most of the indicators. And again, comments about a good working relationship. And typically, when we look at a strong board superintendent relationship, it's words that we talked about tonight, trust, communication, understanding our goals. So these are kind of all the things that help make for that successful board, superintendent relationship. And then the next section is board and staff relationships. So this one's, can be a little bit tricky if we think about the fact that, you know, all of our communication goes through the superintendent. How is a board, do we have a good relationship with the staff? So typically, the way that would happen is, do we recognize the work of our staff? Do we, you know, support them with the professional development needs? Do we have good personnel policies for them? So those are ways then that we can have a, you know, a relationship with the staff. So here, I think it goes back to, you know, and also talking about as board members attempting, you know, community events. And so I think somebody mentioned, yeah, you know, I involve to these, but I could do a better job of going to the ones where, you know, my kids maybe are not at, I'm just attending as a board member. And then there were mentions of the fact that you are doing a good job or doing a lot of recognition of staff. But again, perhaps there could be ways to be with the board as well.
Steve, do you have any ideas? I think it's, it's been a great step that we put in a staff number of the year, the community number of the year, student of the year. I think that recognition's been well received, and we do a really nice job with it. Can we do even more staff recognition? Without, and by the way, when I say that, I don't want to recognize somebody by telling them they have to come to a meeting at 7:30. Because I don't think it's fair. I mean, they, they work hard all day. And can we, I, I'll tell you what some of the stuff I was thinking about, just to give some ideas, is, you know, can we give out awards at staff meetings? I don't want to disrupt the staff meeting or lengthen that, but can it be a, you know, once a quarter, I don't know, something where we recognize somebody and either you or somebody else on the board to pop in, give them a word, walk out. And how do we, how do we make it so we recognize them, which doesn't create a burden?
Right, I want to be hard.
I mean, and we don't have to answer that now, but that's just something I was kind of thinking about. Sorry.
What's your idea?
Oh, maybe he has any thoughts, a good idea or...
As long as we're not going to add any burdens to the, to the staff, like I said, making them come to this meeting if they don't want to, or making their staff meetings longer. I think that might be a way, might be something to investigate.
Like is there like a five-year award, a 10-year award, like some longevity?
I don't think it's not a work meeting.
Can we do it that they don't have to come to a work meeting? I mean, or, or whatever we do, if it's not officially a work, I don't, something where we put their name on social media, whatever. Do something that recognizes longevity as a staff member? I don't, just something to think about. Kind of moving this next year, I'd like to see us do even more, they can take it to the next level.
I think HRD is something like that, the neighborhood, if you see that, that's something, 20 years, 30, 50 years.
Good. Then the, the last section is board and community. Like I said, this is the area that the board evaluated itself the lowest at 3.0. And the lowest indicator in the whole, you know, this whole board self-evaluation was number seven, where it says has an effective community relations program. And the board gave itself a 2.3 of four. So that's the lowest individual indicator in the whole board self-evaluation in the board part. So kind of, as, again, as you look, as you say, you look for opportunities for a goal or, you know, to, to consider that this was an area that the board challenged itself on.
So could I ask, do we feel we don't have a good community relations program, or that we don't relate well to the community? Or are we not, is it that we don't have something in writing formally, or, or we just not do any job with the community?
I don't think the board relates particularly well with the community. Steve talks to the community all the time. But we as a board, I don't think we effectively communicate with the community.
It's kind of tricky, because a lot of the communication does come through me.
Well, it does.
This has come up in numerous meetings.
But we, we've...
Well, I was deeply involved in community activities, and most people I've involved in almost all important events. So I need to, what, you know, what's the definition of effective community, community relations program? You know, I think everybody knows a certain amount of individualness in our board throughout the community. In terms of a formal program, the community relations is, you know, something in writing. You didn't achieve it all, so you have to have some together. And, you know.
I kind of read it now a little bit the same way. I mean, I feel like we're all married in the community, in the common. But in terms of actual program, no, we don't, starting at heart. So that's how I read this, and that's why I think...
That was why I asked. I read it, do we have a program? When I define a program, it's like, here's something in writing that's like, we're gonna do this, this, this. We don't have that. But I think we do a good business on it.
I think one of your questions, one of the questions we read is, you said, do you think the board effectively relates to the public? I think you guys are probably yourselves.
Much higher, right? And then the follow-on question would be, do you think you need a community relations program? Maybe the answer's no. I mean, we don't, I don't know. We don't need anything for us. I feel like we all kind of, yeah, individually, we're, we're a tremendous...
I think we're very, so I, I would put it this way too. I think we're very good reactively, and everybody's good with the status quo right now. What we may want to think about is, as we move forward, and we think about student population growth and the need for facilities to accommodate student population growth, and the costs associated with that, and everything that goes down that road, we may want to think about being more proactive with a program, because we're, people are good with what we have now, but when you go to them and say, we need more money because we're running out of space, it's like, well, I don't think you're running out of space. Yeah, I think that's, we've, we've gotten the message out a little bit. How do we take that message and get it out more and understand what that message means? Not just, we're gonna see population growth. Okay, what does that mean? Like my taxes are gonna, you know, we need more space. Okay, we need more space. What is it gonna cost us money on and on? So I think, I don't think, I guess what I'm saying, you know, I don't think we needed a program until now, but I can make an argument that moving forward, we should come up with a program because we've got to be proactive to get ahead of this.
But I think, I think it needs to be strategic. You know, there's always some specific things you want to do with it. It can't just be, we need to do that, right?
We just need to communicate more. Like more is not...
More like at the tier point, you want to do less to less, right? You want to focus on the less.
Yes.
And if you're pinpointing what needs to manage for the population growth, it has to be focused communication. It doesn't conflict, doesn't want, you don't want other people contradicting. Like in other words, the board, you guys put out something in mind, kind of the contradiction we said. And everything would have to be kind of together.
Sure. And, and you're right, you know, it's gotta be a very succinct message. And it's adult communication, so it's gotta be repeated over and over and over. And it's gotta be brought to multiple stakeholders. And we've got to strategically figure out who are those people that need to understand the message, because those are leaders that are gonna get the message. If we get to a leader within an area or a group of people or whatever it might be, they're gonna get the message out for us. So how do we find who are those folks that are leaders in the community that can help us get the message out? Because the seven of us, and really, guys, once again, we go back to that point we said earlier, where the message come from. It's really, you know, Steve and myself, really, that are the, the voice of the board, right? How do we, I'm asking Steve, how do we get that message out?
So maybe kind of like what we did with the Valley Field, how we had that group of power people there. Talk to them about the problem, brainstorm solutions. I know it took a little longer, right, Don, than we wanted it to happen, but it actually is happening now. So yeah, maybe something like that. I, when you, when you call like those leaders, I like to call them power people. You find your power people, your PTA people, your mayor, anybody who has, you know, that can help drive this message. And then, and then you do presentations about it, and then all the other people start to learn about it, and they turn over, they more information. And I think just kind of like grows.
That's the, that was my reference, the strategy.
I mean, we have a base to start with, with all the people that came to the strategic plan. So those are already people that are interested in the work that you're doing. So we, you know, we recommend bringing them all back at some point and saying, hey, guys, you know, this is the plan you gave us, this is what we've done so far, this is what we're working on, and this is how we need your help naturally forward.
True. It's a really good point. So we need to... True, it's a really good point, sure, I mean, and we're at that point where we're two years out, right, from our strategic plan? So this is the check-in on the strategic plan. And in that check-in, it's, hey, by the way, this is one of the things that we're, we're thinking about now as a board and as an administration. So we need some help, we need some folks to get together and talk about this. Who's interested in, in helping us understand what's going on and what our options are? I think, I, I think, guys, one of the problems with our board goal, not that I want to go back to that, but I think the problem is we need to form a committee or we need to give it to a committee. Because without that, it's, it's kind of all of us doing a little bit here and there and there's nobody that's focused on it, so. I don't, I, I feel, I'm glad we had the conversations, I feel differently about this than I did when I filled this out.
Before we move on, I have a question of this. In this section, in these previous nine sections, we've been relatively close, we've been relatively consistent internally. Our overall board rating versus our individual ratings have been fairly close. But how do we know that we're not just being, we're just not in an echo chamber here? How do we know what other people outside of the board itself looks at our, looks at the job we're doing? I mean, we can't just wait until the next election comes around and people decide to run against the incumbents. We need to have something better than that.
Yeah. I'll give my opinion, Dave. I think that that's something all of us need to judge and give feedback to the board. So if we're talking to community members, I mean, I hate to say things, I'd love more people to be here that are interested in getting involved in understanding what we're doing. But what we see most of the time is people that come here because they've raised a problem or they have an issue. I think you need to look at certain things. I mean, not to say that that's a good barometer, but certainly elections are an okay barometer. Another one is when you have a, a bad situation, the reaction from the community. When you have a bad but challenging situation, how does the community react? When you have something good, how does the community react? So I just think we, I don't think there's a single parameter. I agree, we don't have like a community evaluation of the board. But I think the litmus test to me is, is am I getting positive or negative feedback? And to be honest with you, most of the feedback I get now is constructive. Hey, I saw this, but, you know, they're, they're coming to me with ideas and suggestions and not, I got a problem, you go deal with it. Which to me is progress because I think that means the community empowers us, but wants to be part of us too. So that's been my, I don't know if there is a way to put a single parameter on how would, how the community thinks we're doing. Anybody?
You're right, I think, you know, I think there's a clear what? You know, they're not, they're not, you're expressing your opinion.
Do we average, what, like one person a meeting and that person is usually the press representative? I don't think it counts if you're.
So you're on your average, right?
But I think Mike's point is, now, I think you take, I think, right now, shot, sound shot of time, is that I think we're perceived positively because of things that have happened over the last few months in district. And I think the, it hasn't been a negative major reaction, but it's been a supportive community reaction. And several of us, so to me, that says that the community is supportive for those part of the year.
I mean, even just the fact, you know, I still tell other districts about the number of people that came out to your strategic plan. It does because for a district your size, you have ways, you did almost what any other district was able to accomplish. So again, I think that says a lot about the, the trust and the support that community has in the work that you do.
I mean, when Steve mentioned it a few minutes ago, when Steve brought together the, you know, sports organizations to talk about the Valley Field, I mean, they were all, they were all there, every single organization in town was representative. Every single one was collaborative. They started taking out pieces of paper and drawing things and how can I help with this? I want to get involved with that, I got somebody that can help with this. I mean, I think they're collaborative, I think the community in general. And, and I mean, another way to judge, another barometer would be the budget. I mean, I wish somebody would come out and give us some feedback, but we, I mean, we used to get a lot more feedback when I was first on the board about what's going on with the budget. I mean, we're at the point where Steve tries to set up meetings to present to the seniors or others and they go, no, we're good. Don't come in and waste fifteen minutes, we want to hang out with our friends and talk more.
Whatever they do.
So, I mean, I think that's another, another kind of way that we have to look at it and say, it's another piece of feedback. Is if they don't want us to come in and present the budget?
It's either really good or because they trust us, or it's really bad because they know it's gonna be the same.
Or they're just not doing it, you know?
Which is why I'm wondering, are there, are there other ways that we can get feedback, be it positive, negative, or neutral? Constructive, creative, whatever, I just.
Any ideas or suggestions, Charlie, you on?
I mean, although if I'm asking through, you know, a convention before or a survey, you know, it's, it's, would be unusual for a board to ask the community how the board's doing. Usually it might be part of the larger survey of how, what's going on in the, the school district and here's a few questions about the board versus just, you know, something specifically designated to the board.
So maybe the strategic update meeting, strategic plan update meeting might give us some additional feedback. Any other ideas, Dave, or?
No, I don't, that's.
We have a lot of liaison here also, and that would be a great place for us to do both of these things. Where we have a message that we want put out for each of us as representatives of the board to give that message at that point and kind of make that more of a focus of our board meetings. Okay, so now we're talking about budgets, we want, we want this message to go out. So everybody bring us to the whatever meetings they're attending that month. And then that's also another place where if we're more interactive at those meetings as representative of the board, we'll also engage more people and get more feedback. So if there's concerns, at least you give that audience the opportunity to give feedback there.
That's a, that's a really good point, Steve, because we have liaisons and like I tell you, my experience being on liaisons has been, I decide the three things I want to, because they'll come to us and go, hey, what's the board update? At least the three things that I think are, but, but then Dino goes to the next meeting and he presented three other things.
Totally.
Is there, one of the things I've seen from MHRD is they put out like a, they don't post, I haven't seen their minutes or their agendas or anything, but they do post like meeting highlights? I don't know if it's, maybe we just put it in the agenda or something.
I think, I think, I was gonna be caged on that.
They don't post.
My failure of attending a meeting. Although I did talk to a, like, board chair, I have two events, the board's presentation. So I'm sorry about that.
No, no, I'm not looking for the minutes, I guess my point was just, they post like a meeting highlights, yeah.
Something a little more.
Yeah, it's like, I just, it's a one-pager where I guess their, their goal is for somebody to say, hey, what's going on with the board? But here's one page I can read instead of like.
Who's reading this?
James has said, yeah, I'm gonna do this. So I don't know if it's something, I, once again, don't want to create work. Maybe it's just something that we can, like you said, at the end of the meeting, maybe we can put it in our good of the cause.
Yeah, what are the three things from this meeting? Do you want everybody to bring out this month?
We can agree as a board on the three things real quick, it's not a formal thing, it's just, hey, who's got a few things? Okay, we're gonna mention this, this, and this, so if I go to your next meeting, it's on, here's your message. So the message is, is the same across the board.
It's like talking points. Yeah, especially when you find yourself in this, you know, in a situation where you need to bring a message out to the community. It's important that the board has consistent talking points so that you're all giving the same message.
Yeah. That's a good way to do, ready to discuss that. Do you come up with, do you come up with a degree or four, whatever topics you are? And then Marek spoke about Cindy and Luca throwing into the Friday all day or more hours?
Well, it's a big, yeah, it's there for the commentary. You can post it on the social media and we can discuss it as liaisons and it's the same message the whole way around.
Got one, Don?
Did I?
I, uh, because, well, a lot of us probably need time, time to kind of sit through something like this. What if, some kind of call up questions where people could, you know, do this? We would say, guys, in the phone line email is open, whether you said specifically, are meetings the same? Email or something, you know, or even on the forum? This is a question, we'll answer it at the meeting and that'll be recorded, you know, if you can attend.
I mean, as long as it's not live, I wouldn't want it done live.
No, no, it's, I know you got an email, you got an invitation.
You got it by Friday or something.
Got a deadline and, yeah, you know, it's on, and then you can, it'll have a forum on our website.
Right. And you have it being on us. I just saw progress, someone just did a presentation on that, that's a way to just put something out to the community, everybody responds back.
I can probably add on YouTube channels to the, the other ones. Ask a question. Does that allow you to devote two hours to the speakers to ask the question?
And you can limit it too, you can say, you know, we're gonna take two questions every meeting or something. It doesn't have to be, you know, if we have kind of a hot topic going on, you might get thirty questions and, you know, we're not gonna address them all, but.
Who wants to?
Yeah.
Well, yeah, probably. Just say, people consider that your questions are our meeting.
The only concern I have with that is we need to have a way to contact that person if the question is not appropriate for us to discuss that before we go. Because we may get a lot of questions or requests for information that are personnel related or who knows, that may not be appropriate. I don't want to just put it into a black box and then they go, oh, yeah, we submit something all the time, the board member here talks about it. So we would have to have a way, they'd have to put an email address. And, and, yeah, it would just have to be, I don't care about the email address outside of the, hey, this is, you know, not a, Steve did write back like, hey, please contact me, this is not something you discuss in public, but if you have a question about our policy on personnel or something like that, I can certainly discuss it with people on off.
I don't like a suggestion box.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's like that point you made about service to you, we talked about, we didn't want to have a comment without the ability to get back to somebody, right? Because if they wrote something where you need, you really need to get back to them, you don't have any ability to do that.
Well, that's something in the means, you know? Consider it like a virtual attendance.
So we wouldn't be in a, it's gonna be, you know, identify ourselves if they have a question. I mean, anything that's sensitive shouldn't be talked about in the board meeting anyway. If it was that sensitive, we're gonna want to tell them your name, what your name is, right?
You got the same requirement, you give your name and your name and address, you know? Ask a question.
Good, so the last part of this then was two open-ended questions, asking you to recognize the board's highest priorities as opposed to the team that we have three major challenges currently facing the district. So again, look to see whether there was a commonality in responses from the board members. So almost everybody mentioned in some way, either like your space, your facilities utilization, impending population, loans, so kind of those things. Almost everybody mentioned in some way, either budget, state aid, unfunded mandates, kind of the impact that that has. And then a couple of people talked about, you know, the increased awareness of the mental health and wellbeing needs of students. And then the last piece of it talked about in, in specific areas of board governance that we feel requires additional focus and training. And some of that, I think, is a lot that we talked about tonight. Because somebody said how we operate and communicate in our committee structure. The next one talked about communication, we talked about, you know, somebody mentioned uncharted expenses. So things that we've really kind of addressed in a lot of the conversations that we already had. I don't know if there's anything else that anyone else has about it, the board self-evaluation. So I mean, I think that this was a really good example of how the board used this as a tool to identify some areas that, that the board can continue to, you know, increase its performance on and areas to focus on and ways to, to move forward and get better at the work that you do. So the last piece of it were the three graphs, the three charts. So the, the first one was talking about, you know, comparing this page one, what we said we value versus how we scored ourselves as a board in each one of the nine areas. The second graph compares the board scores to the individual scores. And then the third graph compares how we scored ourselves last year versus this year. Second finished piece, so we move on to the finalizing the goals, right? So I just, we wanted to go back to the goals that you had suggested.
Can you put that aside or actually, you have it in front of you?
Yeah.
Question needed.
No, I got it, too.
I think we talked about this last year, but, and I know that the schedule restricts us, but if at all possible, we need this separate meeting next year? Is that a possibility?
Tried doing it this year, we barely got in.
I know, that's what I'm saying, but I mean, look, it's, we haven't talked goals yet, it's none, we haven't touched the agenda either.
Yep.
So as you look at, you know, so we're pretty much continuing, right? All of the, three out of the four goals from last year. So I assume then that there will be different focuses. I know you mentioned on the achievement one, that the focus would be on that this year, right? I don't know if there's anything else of the other two goals where you would be, you know, how, how this goal will look different to the board than how it looked last year in terms of what you will be accomplishing or working on?
Really, the goal growth is, it's gonna be on, on all of it for a while. And it's just continuing the work we've been doing. It's a pretty, it's gonna be, it's gonna be a lot more, more efficient than what it was last year. Last year we had a plan, it was planning, now we're figuring out what we're gonna do forward.
But like looking at the, looking at the increased, increased achievement, so focusing on that, I guess, the, the, the question, what's that goal for this year? Like how, you know, what is, what are, I mean, give us maybe a little bit of an outline of what the action, action is gonna look like? Or where are you thinking the actions are gonna be at?
Well, I mean, this is a quite, this is something that you need to go ahead with here, so I don't really, it's just, any kids that are below grade level benchmarks have to be improved, so we have action plans, but, I mean, I really couldn't give you a specific thing because it's gonna come from the test data that we haven't really received yet. But we already, we gave, we got preliminary data that we feel that this is the regional one we're working on.
I guess I'm looking more exceptionally, like we talked about in the past, what are the, what kinds of things, what are you thinking we're gonna be doing?
So, obviously, we're still gonna be using the math coaches to try to improve that. It's, you know, a lot of these goals are not gonna be goals that you do in one year. That's, that's a, you know, increasing achievement for all our kids that don't meet grade level benchmarks. To be honest with you, that, to me, that basically tells you everything. I'm not really sure what you guys are looking for, but if there's kids that aren't meeting the benchmarks and you want to put in actions to fix it, I can't tell you what those actions are other than we, you know, it has to do with the training of staff, it has to do with check-ins, action plans, you know, pre-test, post-test, those kinds of things. Just making sure that we're focused on this in all our areas. You know, like, in other words, we're not going off into seven different areas. We have a focus and we're working on improving that, that one area.
Well, I guess that's my point, I guess that's the kind of question. And, yeah, I'm trying, not, I mean, I'm trying to jump, but I guess what I'm trying to get at is, is do you guys foresee being more teacher training? I guess you, you think we're not there yet from, there's more training to do. Is there a curriculum that we, we need to have used or might use as well enough yet? Or are there interventions we're just not doing? I guess I'm trying to give that a little bit more, just a little bit more detail, but we think maybe we can deal with it.
And so it'll be mostly using the, the coaches, like the math coach, to do PD with the teachers to get, to just get better at. Like get better at teaching math, get better at using the stuff we have. That's it, help drive those kids that are, you know, a lot, some of it also is, is in our special ed classes, so. You know, you have people that are like generalists and they may not be as specifically trained in certain areas of math, so that's, that's what we're working on. It, it gives us a focus so that for the whole year, we're gonna, we're gonna, we're gonna use our math coaches in a pinpoint way to help drive. It gives us a focus so that for the whole year, we're going to, we're going to, we're going to use our math coaches in a pinpoint way to help drive, you know, the kids' benchmarks higher everywhere.
Now, is this going to be a quantifier at all? In terms of, for your action letter, you're going to come up with benchmark achieved on a head?
That's really, I mean, most likely to be something, because whatever, whatever, what percentage of kids that are below the benchmark, we're going to want to increase that.
Right, but I, yeah, but I.
We'll have the data, we'll have the posting.
But based on the data, going in, if we're going to have an action say, you know, based on this, we like to get twenty percent of the kids.
And Dr. Collins' goal did have cutoff numbers on it this year, so.
Right. So they would match up, that would be much of a match up.
Okay, so we're, we're all good with the achievement goal then, recognizing that the focus will be on math. Recognizing that we'll be using, you mentioned the math coaches to really pinpoint into work that we're doing, to provide the professional development the staff needs, we'll be doing pre and post testing. And then reviewing the state test data, what we receive, and we'll be using that to drive the work that needs to be done. So we all good with that as a goal and the focus for that first goal? And then the second one with the planning for enrollment growth, so what do we see that looking like for this year?
It will be investigating, investigating alternate placements for students. Primarily, I don't want to say specifics, but obviously everybody knows the stakeholders, but I don't really want something like that at all. It would be more like coming up with a plan to deal with enrollment growth and not having enough space for our students.
We need to get that report back in two weeks and it's not.
Because it's.
You know, we need something else in addition.
Kind of sound like what we were talking about earlier, bringing more stakeholders into the mix, right? As part of the process of this next year, probably, right?
Yeah, that's a part of what I would receive this year. It's a little, you know, it's a little bit of a spur off of that, it's kind of community relations slide, but I think it's part of the communication plan for that. I think, to me, this year is probably where the rubber meets the road on that goal. I think we're going to, this, you know, the last couple of years have been a lot of groundwork, a lot of preliminary work, data, figure out where we're at. We've looked at a bunch of different options at this point. This year, I think we're going to have the progress.
Look, you talk about making goals, comment, our communication program is always going to compete, right? Because let's say if you talk about, if you talk about, if the grade there, it's going to be incumbent on us to get that message out, weigh your topic at that intensity.
Yep.
Laying the groundwork, laying the seeds, and like, and understand that our alternatives might be a lot more expensive. Could we include, I'm sorry.
No, no.
Could we include sort of a worst case scenario, planning as well? I mean, what is our worst case scenario so that that becomes part of our communication? You know, this, these are, these are different options. We're still waiting on data and information, right? But if A happens, then these are our choices. If, if, you know, I and E or the engineering firm comes up with, like you said, a recommendation that we should completely avoid SMP, you know, then what do we do next? You know, is that something that you've already thought through or, you know, is that something that we can start to talk about or formalize? You know, plans B, C, you know, D, and all the way through Z if necessary?
I think there are structures that are already built, you only have one option. Then you have two other options to expand your footprint, right? Build a school, or you add on to one of those schools.
Right.
So, I mean, these are, these are not things that we have to talk about. You can talk about it as a board, everybody, you can talk about it for a long time. So, yeah, I mean, there would have to be more than one solution, right? There would have to be a few, and one of, maybe some of the solutions are even five. I mean, we know that building a school is, comes with a lot of challenges, I think it's probably because there's some, there's problems with the accessibility, there's some problems with wet mess. Like, there's a lot of different, you know.
I guess the way I see this problem is a problem that the community, the town decides with us. Because if we give them options and tell them, you know, as a board, this is what we're faced with. We're faced with SMP that's contingent on, you know, the audit or the engineer giving their approval. And worst case scenario, what we're faced with is potentially another referendum of, what, ten million dollars to add on the review. You know, and, and having numbers really makes it real for them. With a disclaimer, of course, that these are just estimates. But I think that's the sort of, that's the formal sort of response that we may need to have as we are moving along with this. Is that this is sort of Plan B, you know, with an estimate, it could just be a one pager, you know? The place, you know, our property that we haven't developed yet, that's Plan D, you know, that could run into this, you know, with a dollar amount attached to it. So, and, you know, let the community see that, you know, we are exhausting all our options here. This is what we're faced with, we're about to vote on something like this, but if you tell us you don't want us to, or, you know, if you disagree, you would want us to spend the ten million. I mean, who knows, maybe they do want a referendum and wants to build on it, we highly doubt it, but you know, that's, it's not for us to, you know, say, it's sort of for them to tell us.
I mean, I think to a point, I agree with what you're saying, but there's a point where if you're elected and you're the voice of people, understood, and you can't have a direct democracy on something like this. You can ask for something, but you can do that, but these things have a tendency to get away from themselves. You end up flying off in five different directions.
The one great example that I remember was when, I think, you know, we posted it up on Facebook about changing the value use time, right? To make it a labor-starting. And there was a lot of pushback from, you know, a lot of parents saying, you know, for different reasons, and I think that was the key, right? I mean, I don't know, I don't know how that was actually voted on because I was a party reporter at that time. But I do remember that that was an option or a discussion point where, you know, a lot of people stepped up and said, you know, hey, we don't like this idea, you know? And it brought to light a lot of the concerns that parents had. And as a result, I think the board wound up changing the decision. I could be wrong, I don't remember that, that, I wasn't here for that, but.
I think that's actually a great example of why not. Because we basically gave emphasis to a few people who complained, even though we all agreed it was a better thing for kids. So, you see what I mean?
No, it's fair.
I did agree with that.
Well, I think that was the one person who was against it to begin with.
Well, and sometimes what the help the community does is maybe, you know, rather than asking them for a decision or what they like, or, you know, have them identify strengths and challenges of the different options. So that they can look at things through a lens that you're not looking through. So that by the time you do make a decision, you consider what everybody thinks is good and bad about each one of the options. So rather than asking them to pick something or tell us what they like, tell us, these are the options, what do you think are good and bad about each one of them, so that we can consider that.
And you guys all read my dissertation on this, so it's, it's an area.
Happy Mark.
Yeah, it's an area of expertise and money. So, I love that you need to engage the public, but I do know that there's a certain way to do it. Because you need, what you need to do is you need to get, like I said before, your power, get your power people on board with the decision. Because you can't have a meeting with like five hundred people deciding this, it's out of control. You need your thirty, forty prime people that are on board with this. Then, then from there, you take a look at two or three options, not like five, because now you're, it gets out of control. From the two or three options, then you start to talk about where, where are we at, like, does the public support this? And from there, it's one chance, it's one plan, it's only where, this is maybe you do this, it's just one plan, and the plan is driven, and then you get support and you try to get it passed. But it's very easy for these kinds of things to go out.
So, so I don't disagree with you. I, I, so I also hear that you're agreeing that having three, two to three options that could be presented to power people is a good idea, right? So.
Yeah, because you want, you want those two equal, you want, you want a contingent, you want a group of people that are going to out support this thing. And you need to go over what, or when you walk out with the white folk coming out, and everybody agrees that this is the plan. And from there, then we start talking about it, we start publicizing, this is how we're going to go about this. And yet, you have the public on your side, and you, and you push for it.
Yeah, I don't believe that we are incapable of making the decision. But I do believe that getting feedback, getting comments or, or pros and cons or perspective from others outside of the board is often helpful. And I think that it's not something that I would ignore, I think that's something that I would prefer to have. I mean, how often have we said, we don't have enough people at these meetings, right?
So, if you remember, the board, the strategic planning, it was part of my whole thing, it was about facilities and getting. And other than three, eight, four outliers that were kind of out there, the other ninety people or so were, yeah, let's, let's not have substandard spaces, let's issue whatever we have to do, right? I don't know if you guys recall that, but there were certainly a couple that were, like I said, they weren't along with the rest. And then there was a large group of people that, that was basically telling us all, we're an entity, right? That this is end though, we don't expect kids to be in substandard space.
I also, I remember that clearly, I also remember during the colleagues for the one township meeting I came to, where a lot of people were worried that there would be a huge referendum. And that's something they wanted to avoid. So, you know, and that was an, you know, to see people lined up, you know, just be able to speak at that, you know, it was a great experience. And I think that's sort of what I'm getting at, is that I'm not looking for them to make a decision, I'm just going to hear.
Right.
Hear what they're thinking, I think it's always valuable, so. I agree.
Okay, so then as we look at the last goal that we're thinking about, expanding the social emotional learning program. Again, I don't know if there's a specific area we're hoping to go with that this year or focus for this year.
Or, well, we're expanding, we've done a lot of work in this area, it's one of our strategic goals. And it's continuing to, it's continuing that along the lines of the goal. I think, I think by the end of next year, all the programs will be in place. This goal will just be something that works to its margins. And I also am okay with eliminating that goal, because I know we're already moving pretty far along on it. If we do, I would want to add another goal, two goals I have up there are super important also, so it'll be a lot of, it'll give me a lot of energy to get hold of this.
I guess my, my thought on that goal is, and you mentioned it briefly in your presentation, Steve, about, what was it? About Valley View. Obviously, plans about you in nineteen twenty. If that's part of the goal, I think it would be important. I think the other thing to consider is if that's not a goal we're interested in, I would point back to the strategic planning and say, okay, we've got a goal from goal two of strategic planning, a goal for four, if we're good with the first two. And the B is the social emotional learning piece. The other one, we don't have a goal up there, is number one, which would be develop a culture of learning that enables students to excel in the twenty-first century role in community. Let's see, you know, if we're going to look for one more goal, I would stay with three in some way, shape or form, and I would like to see that expand to Valley View. And I know there's a lot going on there, so if you think it's not capable of doing it at Valley View this year, then I would be for looking at something else. Do you think?
I won't be able to just two goals. I think, I think these are pretty big things. I mean, we, I don't mind doing another goal, it's something we're already going to do. But we're going to be, you know, this, this planning for enrollment growth goals is a large, it's a large goal. It's going to take a lot of energy to call, to get this thing out.
So do you want to leave the social emotional goal up there or do you want to take it off?
Okay, I would say take it off.
Laura, we're going to, it's not like we, it's kind of like the, it's kind of like the future ready schools goal from last year. Yeah, we're going to, we're, we, we don't have it yet, we're hoping to have it for two of the three schools. And as I understand it, we're still going to be moving forward with Valley View. You said earlier, meaning, we're going to be moving forward with Valley View anyway, I don't think we need to put it as a, as a goal for the board.
I did say, I did say that. That if you're going to solve for Valley View, you might get pushed to come here, matter of fact, you know, things are going on at Valley, obviously.
So my only, my only take of that, Steve, was is it even more important to do it now?
It's more about, you know, sometimes these initiatives, it takes a lot, you know, it's a lot of paperwork and stuff like that, where you've got a lot of other things going on.
Well, expand social emotional learning program at Valley View doesn't say national school of character.
Right, and not something that, I think, you should clarify, I don't, I don't know.
I can see it doing that, I just don't, I can't guarantee we're going to do it this year, but maybe we'll finish that year. Well, we're definitely going to do the social, expand the social emotional learning program. It's how you did it tonight.
Or is, or you tell me, is social emotional learning, I don't want to say less important, but is mental health, you know, because it flipped at late, as the kids get into middle school age, where, you know, a lot of the things they've done for the social emotional learning programs at both River View and Lake View have been very, very young child oriented. Is there something we think we can implement there that would have a quick effect, or is it more the mental health aspect? I don't know. I, I think, I think after what we've gone through this year, not having something about social emotional learning or mental health at Valley View is a miss on, at our middle school level, is a miss. I think.
I would agree, and I think that, I think if we're keeping it on, understanding that we're not talking about achieving some type of benchmark with national or state recognition, just that it's a focus of ours, even if it's what you were intending on doing anyway. I think it shows that as a district, it's something that we're focusing on, it's something that we're concentrating on, and we're looking to evaluate and reevaluate and find you. Where I think that we did a great job, or the, you know, the administration, the staff did a great job implementing a program this year, but I don't think, I don't think anybody can say like, this is the perfect program and it should go, you know? So, that's the only, if we were there, then I would feel comfortable removing that goal, but since we're not there, I think we need to at least keep it there so that we recognize that as a focus, even if it doesn't have, again, doesn't need a national or state seal or a triple, we just need to know that we're paying attention to that.
I would even potentially take it to a more, where normally, I don't want to get really detailed on the goals, I would almost point it to middle school on the goal. Because I think that that message will come across hopefully clearer to the community that we recognize what is needed and we're focusing as a district on it. And I agree completely with Laura. We, I would rather our staff not spend time, it's nice to get a banner outside the school for a national school of character, state school of character, that's great. But if that's going to take away from them doing the job, I'd rather say, forget about the damn banner, let's just make sure we're there to support the kids. So whatever that looks like, I don't know if it's social emotional learning, mental health, a little of both, I don't, I don't know how to word that goal, but I was kind of trying to go back to strategic goal number three to see if we could pull something out there, but.
How do you say that social emotional learning, mental health falls into that, or do you see it as?
I think you can give it a slash, like, social emotional learning, emotional health.
And we did focus, I mean, regardless of what happens within the district this year, our focus for that program was within the elementary schools this year, with the intention that the following school year, the focus would be middle school. So it's really not any different than the administration plan go along, it's just articulating it in the goal.
When I, when I look at the goal in general, sorry, number three of our strategic plan, create an environment that talks with self-aware, resilient, specifically minded and empathetic citizens. I mean, self-aware and resilient, the first two in there, I think are exactly what we continue to need in our middle school, I think. I mean, self-aware and resilient, the first two in there, I think are exactly what we continue to need in our middle school, I think. I think now is the perfect time to reemphasize what we've been doing and curb on it all along.
I would agree.
So you wanted to say add, expand social emotional learning slash emotional health programs?
Is it, is it wrong to have it, for a district goal to be focused on one school within the district?
I don't, I mean, I don't know if it's wrong.
But the same part of it, the, the same clear plan, you know, that to the other schools, right? Yeah, that's true.
The action has to be figured out, you know, it's a lot of the, a lot.
Yeah, I think the only reason I was thinking that too was, if the public looks at it, I want them to understand.
It's not reactionary, but if you break it that way, it seems like it is.
Okay, so we're really good with that. Add, add the end of mental health. So the expand social emotional learning slash mental health programs. So whatever we decide tonight, it's fine from here.
It's gonna be improved at the, at the always meeting. So you have time to go back and forth. At the always meeting, you have to, because I have to, I want everyone to be ready. Complication on that.
Okay, and so we're all in agreement, right, that these three goals are enough, right, for, for district goals? Shana Valansky said it is revisiting the board goal. So last year's board goal was to create and implement a community relations program. So as a board, do we feel that that's something that there is an opportunity for us to do some more work in this year? Or do we want it to look different this year?
I think from all our conversations tonight, looking ahead, I think it's gonna be more important than ever for us to be proactive and engage the community. And I think that it's important enough, and it is more work on all our plates, but I think it is important enough for us to have a set plan going forward for the board. And this is where we struggle to really, and we're, I personally, we've forgotten, is that we don't wanna task our administration with more work. And we don't want to, you know, we wanna make sure we operate within the rules that are set for us. So how do we as a board communicate with the community?
So, yeah, so I mean, that is the challenge, because, you know, like we say, as a board goal, we say that everything to accomplish a goal has to be within the board's peripheral. So, as a board, you may support a community relations program. Like the administration, most of your community relations program is going to be through the superintendent and through the administration, but how can you support that work? Or how can you help it versus you being solely responsible for all of the pieces of something? So you might wanna even look at the wording a little bit, kind of from that angle, recognizing that you're probably not gonna put together a whole, normal plan. You're gonna help support the plan that he's doing and, you know, how can you take pieces of it? And how can you help make a difference? And, you know, you've already talked about some of the, you know, having talkative points, having, you know, the work your liaisons are doing, having, you know, getting out to the community more, like making a focus and effort of, you know, some words, some calendars, and making sure everybody's at, you know, certain board members are at every event. You know, so making a plan to make yourselves visible and make yourselves accessible. So how do you support their work by things that you can do, I hope that?
You guys think we need a goal to that?
I think that's what I started with, is if we're not to do a lot of the work, which I think that's one of the, it's getting late, so I don't know if I can say probably, but what would typically make up a board goal? If memory may be of a community, communication to the community, so that I can use that as an example of how we can be restructuring that.
So like I was just, the board in a similar type situation, so about the same thing. Like they recognize that they've changed it to more support. So that they are making sure they're gonna be doing some work, they're gonna be helping the work, they're going to focus on the things the board can do, and make sure it's clear that, you know, like, that we're not stepping over that line into the work of the administration.
And how would they support the goal of expanding, you know, of dealing with the public? Because you're gonna be done with that.
I mean, that's one. Or the other option is to switch course here. One of the other things we talked about was communication amongst the board. That's, yeah, communication, just, you know, I don't know how to word that as a goal, but it's really, I think what it really comes down to is communication amongst the board. We're all, and part of that is communication as liaisons, right? Is how do we get that, that, you know, that message out that's, that's from the board, that's a concise message? How do we communicate from the committees and?
So internal and external?
Yeah, I think we gotta check ourselves internally before we start going externally, I guess, so anyway. And I think that's a lot easier for us to do as a board. As opposed to, you know, I think community, we, we're gonna support Steve on his goals. So I mean, to put it as a goal, to say, "Support Steve on his goals."
Right. So are you suggesting something, a goal along the lines of reevaluate our, I don't know, our committee structure and our internal communication or something like that? Or is just that something we're gonna do anyway?
I would say something along the lines of improve internal communication amongst the board, something.
And if that's Steve's goal, I would say, "How would we measure that?"
Well, we would have an action plan. And we've already actually come up with several pieces of the action plan. And we're gonna have the, we're gonna change the policy so that we can allow people to give the committee reports at the work session. We're going to, what else can we say?
Send out specific messages.
Yeah. So I think we've already come up with a bunch of that action plan, if you're gonna do it. I, I wouldn't, a piece of paper that says some kind of, you know, I think it should be concise and quick, you know. This, I mean, we look back at it now, creating different, like creative relationships for it, what is that gonna do for us? Like, we're gonna work out a five-page document that's never gonna be looked at by a board again.
Yeah, absolutely. What if it was, I would check that one. What if it was something like improving the function of the committee to better improve communications or something in the lines of that? How much?
I'd almost rather see us, and I, I'm fearful to say this because I'm not trying to create more work, but I'd rather see us create more committees and allow the committees to do the work individually instead of us doing it as a board sometime. I think we, we say we're a committee structure, but often end up making a lot of the decisions as a board.
Well, the board's supposed to make the decisions.
The board does make the decision, but the recommendation from the committee, the work of figuring out, asking all the questions. I think, I think it's become, we go to the committee, Steve and the administration give us a report. We write down the report, we present it to the board. As opposed to, let's ask a whole bunch of questions, let's vet this out. Let's really be the experts in IMP, or the experts in VNG, or the experts in finance. So that when we go to the, to the board and we go, "Hey, I'm the finance chair. At the finance committee, we talked about these five things. So we talked about..." The committee should be able to answer most of those questions. I mean, you're not gonna answer everything, right? The board's there, the administration's there to support. But I'd like for us, our committees to be a little more experts in that.
I think maybe talking about, honestly, we wanna make sure we're on time. You're not gonna get five lines of color at a committee meeting and go through it in a half hour. That's just not how, and we're stressing the support, right? Trying to keep, keep people out of the last night, but also try to get stuff done. So I mean, I do think there is time constraint. We really, we're gonna do this for a serious time.
But the holistic goal of this is if you three are the experts in this realm, you don't have to spend extra time getting ready for a meeting about other things. Because at the work session, you've got a report from the IMP committee on what was going on with that IMP issue. So you're not going, Steve, saying, "Hey, can you have Sandy explain to me this, this, and this about the IMP?" Does that make sense? Theoretically, from a high level, that should work.
Yes, I agree. But I do think we need to recognize the idea that we're gonna need to shift time for spending time here as a board, as a board in the whole, to more time at the committee level, making that happen. I think that spending time has to be part of the formula.
So you're saying we need to expand the?
I think, yeah, that's not, I think, I think normally, if you do that, normally you wouldn't have, you wouldn't, you wouldn't have like a two-hour committee meeting and then, and then two meetings a month. You switch to a different system. You have, you do have these long committee meetings, then one meeting a month. And this way it's gonna be, you're talking about, you know, two, two-hour meetings plus a two-hour meeting for this. And we're gonna be talking about the same stuff.
I agree. The times need to shift. I agree. You're talking about the time shift.
But then, but then where does the committee report come in? Because then we talk about the work session that was, and by the way, for years, I've been fine with having one board meeting a month. For years. But we just talked about having the committee report out at the work session. So if we don't have the work session, you can't have the report out.
Just because, because of personnel matter, I'd rather have to.
But you're gonna have to keep the committee reports concise.
So why don't you make a goal to, to, to reevaluate and look at committee structure and the organization of our meetings? And then we, keep it, I'll keep it on the, there you go.
Maybe more, that's something more. Yeah, look, maybe, or let us pilot it. Maybe we try it, right? If we want something, we can, we try it.
So I will say, every time we've done this, and this is probably the third time in my time on the board, that we've had a goal of reevaluate or evaluate our committee structure. I think the feedback is almost every time, we need more time at the committee meetings. Right? You know, I mean, Don.
Can I ask a question? If we're gonna have, which I agree with, and, and I'm sorry, Don, I'm joking. If we're gonna have more time at the committee meetings, does that equate to less time during the regular sessions?
It should, yeah.
I mean, is that something that we can maybe look to measure after, as, as we pilot this, right?
That would be the goal, right? And that would be one of your goals, is pilot it and see if it makes a difference. See if we can keep the, if we can keep the committee meetings getting depth, right? It can cover a lot of ground. But the work session should be mostly summarized, answered a few questions that came up, and you move on. I mean, that would be great if that helped work.
There's a lot of pieces though. Like, we can, we can go and do all this, but then the message doesn't get to the full board and it falls apart. So it has to be.
It's gonna take a minute to be shut.
Yeah.
I'd love to pilot it with the finance committee. I mean, I, I'm not chair of finance, but, you know, I'd love to, you know, try to take that on and see. Because I'd love to see a lot more, like the monthly reports from the finance and all of that broader finance committee, so that it could be all summarized and, you know, with, with some, you know, statistics, like we're on pace, or we're gonna go over budget, we're gonna go under budget, you know, with all those types of different recommendations, and just see how that might work with, with regards to, you know, the regular sessions or the work sessions.
So maybe the goal is to pilot this, what you said.
Great. I like your first suggestion, reevaluate the committee structure.
And then just say, "I agree about the committee structure and pilot."
I still make it for saying that was a repeat goal, like you said this two or three times. But if that's what keeps coming up, and then we pilot this program, like if what they're talking about, it does fall under that main goal.
And, well, yeah, and pilot.
Well, pilot is part of the action plan.
Yeah.
Well, all the committee meetings I've been at, I have felt that we weren't the gun you have there. Some people have leave for the committee, they say, "Oh, the committee carry on." So whether the committee meeting was a quick one, like the last one, pretty short for finance, wasn't too much to discuss. Sometimes we've associated a lot of time to begin. We might spend, post an hour on the committee.
And usually, we should do two or three meetings a month.
Yeah, and then we have, yeah, so there's the question made. So, you know, here we are, as many other years. Now this is all run down. Never paid off before. Through the year, and we got communication problems and stuff for committee meetings. So, impossible. And it's like research or something.
Well, Don, you know, it's, uh, gotta, gotta find a goal, or else we can't go all the time. It'll be satisfying. We're gonna find a goal.
We started out with to create and implement a community relations program. So now it's nothing with the community relations which we didn't achieve, achieve at all. So we had committees for years. We do a report. People are free to email. Make phone calls to the BA, the chair of the committee. I called Dino on something, so I emailed Dave on something from curriculum over the course of the year. I don't get where, we're not getting the information into the work session or, or to, or to go on. You know, it's, it's coming, you know, and now, you know, you spend, would have spent an extra twenty minutes, a half an hour, whatever it's gonna be for committee and order me, before we do all the other lists, reading a committee report. It's huge on us. I, I don't, I don't get where the critical lead is to, or us to some other boards to get rid of the committees. Have a committee meeting with full board.
So what, currently you'll see, what's the consensus? Do you see the case, either that the board is alone anymore? Or is it bad, as it was gonna end as well?
I mean, there's definitely more boards that need using the committee structure. But like, you know, a few, like Mount Lakes just went to a board a couple, they just changed this year to a board a couple. You know, and most boards in Morris County are seven and nine members, so the committee structure makes more sense. You know, some of the boards like that, Messick County only have five members, so it's more of a challenge to do this kind of structure. But, and for those boards who aren't in a committee system, they, you know, the most frequent thing I hear from them is, "We can't get everything done. We can't, we can't talk about everything we need to talk about. We can't get all our work done. There just isn't enough time." So, for most boards, it sounds like when the committee structure works well, then it is making the best use of their time, making the best use of, say, having some experts in particular topics really be able to do that thing indeed on behalf of the rest of the board.
I mean, we make, one of our boards in the district, right, they, they, their board meetings are under fifteen minutes, and I don't think that's exaggeration. And I think that's part because they do a huge amount of work behind the scenes within the commission. So that to me seems like, I mean, it can, it can work, right? If you, if you've accomplished that much work previously, then your board meetings are, should be flowing pretty quickly. I personally think it's worth trying. I mean, I feel like organically, most of the people up here feel like it's an issue. And that's what I think I've heard tonight, that over time, this is developing, so I'm concerned. So, I'd like to try it.
Yeah, I, I don't disagree. I mean, I can tell you right now, I'm looking at the agenda right now, and there's provable to purchase sixty-six thousand, almost sixty-seven thousand dollars worth of Chromebooks. And I look at the finance committee report from six-four, and there's nothing on there to talk about Chromebooks. We're about to purchase sixty-some-odd thousand dollars of Chromebooks. You know, did we, what was the evaluation? Did the board, did the committee, finance committee look at that? Did they recommend that we're approving them? I mean, that's the kind of stuff that I think we're, we're having some misses on. It could have been because of timing, because the last meeting for finance was six-four, so maybe that's the problem. But, you know, to me, that's a, that's a potential miss on our part. I mean, as a board, I think we should, you know.
And, and Don, if I could address your, your comments. The one thing that I came to realize tonight is all the work that we did for the finance committee with regards to, you know, on budget, you know, or, or exceeding budget, on pace to exceed budget, or working under budget. I didn't even realize that that was something that, that you, the work you did there. But it's, it's never communicated in the, in the sessions. And I think that's something that, you know, as, as a business owner myself, that's the first thing I wanna know from a financial perspective, is, "Am I gonna be over budget? Am I gonna be under budget?" And, and we never discuss that. And I think that piece of information, even shared to the public, that is huge, tremendous. And I think that's something that we can, as a result of, of some of the changes that we're looking to implement tonight, can be brought to the forefront as, as part of our better way to communicate and to be able to connect with the public. At least that's something that I was disconnected on when I first sat in a lot of these meetings. I had no idea what the board was doing and, and they were voting on things. And from a budgetary standpoint, there's never discussion of its impact to the project. So, and that's something that I'd love to see we can bring to the forefront. And even that example, that might, that might just broaden as well.
In general, I think it's been a topic that's come up over and over and over again, is committee structure, communication. I think, I mean, I can, I feel like that's a recurring one that I, that brings in my mind as far as how long are the committee, committee meetings? Do we have enough time? Do we wanna hire a secretary to take the minutes? I mean, we've, these are ideas that have bounced around because of the problems that we've brought up before. Get them out earlier, right? I mean.
It seemed to me that we had a fair bit of success a couple of years ago when we made the, made one of the goals to get the committee meetings out within a set period of time. You get the minutes out, sorry, not the meetings unless you're, it's the last year, that was two years ago. I, I thought we had some success with that. And it seems that, that this year, I feel as you've kind of fallen away from that. The, the other thing I wanted to say is, uh, a goal doesn't necessarily have to be, uh, an action item. I, I think a goal can be something that we are, we as a board are very concerned about and want to pay particular attention to.
Okay, so are we having consensus then, that we want to have this, um, your goal to, to reevaluate and pilot the, the, the committee structure and communication?
I'm not really in favor of reevaluating the committee structure. I, I think we need to, the, the comment that I had of the evaluation was that I think we need to, we've got like one group of people that are in one set of committees and one group of people in the other set of committees, and there's no, there's no cross-pollination. You have the one set that are in these two or three committees, and they're just in those two or three committees, and you have the other set that are in the other two or three committees. And you don't have any kind, you don't have, I, I was told maybe last year or the year before, that it was because that way you could have all of the meetings right after each other or at the same time. I, I don't, I don't think that is a good way to do it, I think that there should be, I don't think your presence on a committee should be dictated by the other committees that you're on. And, and if, if we're going to reevaluate something, I'd rather reevaluate how we assign personnel to a committee rather than reevaluate the committee structure itself.
It's a good part, and we brought it up before.
You wanna take that one?
So we've had a, this is. We had this conversation, uh, years ago, and I will tell you, we also flipped halfway, did we flip halfway through the year?
And we didn't, we did not, we didn't switch.
Yeah.
Which was here.
And it's, it's very difficult because flipping halfway through the year, you're now in a little bit of a flow, and then all of a sudden you flip and have to learn something that's new.
I'm not talking about flipping halfway through the year.
You're talking about, okay, so, so you're, you're saying personnel and IMP.
We basically, we have, in one set of committees, we have personnel and IMP. And in another set of committees, we have finance, buildings and grounds, uh, transportation. And the people on this committee, and the people on this committee, they're, they're the same people on these two sets of committees.
Yeah.
They're, I think, rather than everybody being the same on these committees, everybody being the same on these committees, some of the, one of the people from one of these committees should be on one of these other ones. It, it should not be, uh, like committees of a block.
So we tried that too, and the problem is scheduling, number one. And number two, they're so error-related that when we did that, so where did we spend our money? We spent it on B and G. So we talk about stuff in B and G, and then all of a sudden you go into, somebody else who did the finance, they're like, whoa, what's that project? And now we're basically having the same committee meetings twice because we're getting people back up to speed. We, we tried, we tried.
We did, we did, and then, so you have two issues. One is that you're bringing people out all at once, because if you split them apart, they're coming in and going. And then B and G finance team is always an issue, they're just too closely related, and everything you're talking about, like I said, carries over from one to the other. So it doesn't, it just doesn't make sense to start on.
So it's essentially one committee. It's the operations committee.
Yeah.
It's actually listed as the operations committee are, right?
I think it's easier to see when you're on that committee to see how close your data are to the other committee. Personnel isn't monthly, so, but if you think about whatever personnel meeting you had this year, if I came and sat with you, I probably would have had a ton of questions that you already talked about throughout the year in IMP.
And B and G and finance are definitely the ones that are more technically related.
And it, it's just, I was scheduled for the meeting, it was tricky, my eyes in my spot. I had, I had a chart, I had, I had a little marker sort of, like, I tried to figure it out. It just doesn't work out, it's like, I'm like.
I did, I talked to Laura, I talked to Tina. I was like, I, I, I had like posted notes around my house, I was like, okay, move over here, there, and it's just, it's hard, it's really, really hard to relate. And then, you know, try and rotate different folks through, and then you talk about, well, the negotiations committee and how do we, you know, what's the time commitment for finance, what's the time, so balance it all out. I, 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 from, from a high level, Dave, I completely agree with you. And when I came on the board initially, I was like, yeah, everybody should get, rotate through committees as often as possible so you get especially a view of everything. But I, I've actually come back around to they, get in, try to spend a year or two wearing that and then try to switch. But then even trying to switch is hard because then you're balancing everybody. I don't know, I'm, I'm open to ideas on it, but it's been, I, I don't know. I haven't found anything that works any better than what we've got.
Okay, so we've circled around here a few times. So we've come back, even if we don't have the wording, at least it brings a concept that this is what we're going to look at.
I was saying, you know, I think we don't need a goal. Well, I'll put it on as a good cause, they can totally settle. There's more reasons, yeah. Figure it out. You think? So.
Yes, so let's meet one basket.
All right, so let's, you just, then just do this, yeah?
So what, Charlie, what do you have there?
I have stuff scribbled in, so, so we. First, we had reevaluate the committee structure and organization, and then organization of our meetings, to kind of see how the two, and then we added in a pilot part of it, so it's kind of looking at change our committee, how are we also then going to change our meeting structure and how the two work together at first.
James, James.
Thank you.
And, you know, I.
He's on the board goal committee, he's the committee. He's actually a committee of one.
You're the whole committee?
Okay, you good with this then?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, thank you very much, I know you guys like, you still have your meeting to, to go yet, right?
Thank you, Charlie. Charlie, thank you for being accommodating, I know we moved this around a few times, and we really, really appreciate you coming out. I know your summers are busy, and we truly appreciate it, you're very helpful, so, thank you.
And I enjoy working with your board, so thank you.
Thank you.
Charlie, if, would you, um, if we did, if the administration decided they wanted to do like a check-in with the five-year strategic plan, is that something that's for board to come out for?
It is, nine fifty-six, we will move on with our agenda, Mr. Forte, superintendent's comments. Okay. Unfortunately, I have a lot that are too important not to do, so we're gonna have to go through them. All right, so we received a grant from Wells Fargo, twenty-five hundred dollars for the free lunches that we do, it helped to trace the cost. So just to recap that, that's seventy-five hundred dollars we did bring in for the free lunches from, from the town and from Wells Fargo. The foundation of Denneville Golf Outing is set for September twenty-third on the website, if you wanna register already, you can do that. Total revenue brought in since I started here, we had, we brought in nine hundred thirteen thousand five hundred dollars. And that doesn't include the thirty, three hundred two thousand dollars that's outstanding for this year. So when we, when we, when we bring in the outstanding money, we should have one point one, two-two million dollars brought in since I started here in two thousand fourteen. I thought that was a good thing, I figured maybe an applause would be nice.
Steve, that's a lot tonight, you heard of it.
All right, so here's, this is the thing that I enjoy probably the most out of all my reports, is telling you some of our students' post-secondary college plans and post-secondary high school kind of stuff. Um, so here's some of the, just some of the college acceptances and some of the place, actually this year, I'm not doing the acceptance, I'm doing the places that they're going. So we have NJIT, Fordham, University of Valencia in Spain. University of Michigan, Stevens Tech, U Penn, Seton Hall, Rutgers, CCM, Norwich University, this is an ROTC student. FDU, SUNY Bantamton, University of Tampa, Villanova, Virginia Tech, Temple, University of Florida, URI. East Carolina, Montclair State, Notre Dame, Robbin, Syracuse, TCMJ, and I'm gonna say the one that I wore my, my daughter's shirt tag, because my daughter is one of the kids, and she's at home and going to Manhattan College. And I did want to tell you something else about this. I actually had a conversation with her about this, and I thought this was something to share with you. She said, Dad, going into the advanced math class in the eighth grade changed your academic life. She actually said that. And I, I didn't, I didn't try to get her to say anything, she actually told me, well, dude. So I was like, really impressed that she said.
What did she want from you that day?
Tuition, I didn't.
She said yes, yeah.
So, uh, and here's a girl who's gonna be an education and math major, so she's gonna Ed. All right, this is a distinction, it's not a math education major, it's education and math. So you have like thirty, thirty college credits in math, and you're like, you're talking like calc three and all that. So I thought it was kind of cool that she said that, and I wanted to just bring it up to you. Um, all right, let me finish my list here. Loyola, Mar, uh, Maryland, University of the Arts in London, Scranton, which is another ROTC student. Ithaca University of Maryland, Elon, Vermont, Northeastern, Purdue, X Men, Penn State, University of Delaware, South Carolina, UMass, Clemson. A few goers in the military, and here's a very interesting one. One of our kids is going to school to become an underwater welder, which, which commands a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar salary. But it's a very dangerous job.
He's a smart student, huh?
So how do you like that?
Something going, the last one, the student last kid off the first year.
Yeah, like, well, you're apprenticed, you have to go through the whole system, but it's, uh.
Should, should be more than eight.
Yeah, but it's also, um, there's only something like five firms in the country that do this here. And it's super, I mean, regular welders are really in demand right now, so I'm sure if you can do that underwater, it's probably gonna be a little tougher, right? So I figured, I, I love, I love sharing this with you guys, I gave you the full list. I just kind of picked a couple out here that jumped out at me, and I, uh, obviously, like, my daughter's up there. It's the first time I got to say her, so it's kind of cool, but, um, it looks like our kids are doing some really good things up there. Be proud.
Thank you, Steve.
Good. That's it.
Uh, Dr. Poulos is not with us tonight, so Damaris, any business administrative comments?
Uh, just a short one. Uh, on this agenda, you're not gonna see the June treasuries report or secretary report because, um, we still, we're, it's a work in progress. The audit would commence on July twenty-two, and hopefully finishing with a good positive financial status. And I have to say, we, uh, right now, it's really been positive financially. The way we just spent some of the unspent fund, um, items that we kind of like later for next year, so free, freeing up, uh, funds for unpredictable expenses that we don't really have a special egg.
Maybe a couple of my socials are.
That's my report.
Thank you. Damaris, it is ten oh-one, I'm open for our first open on the comment section. If you would like to come and talk to the table, state your name and address for the record, sign in, and taking any comments. Seeing no one approach, I will close our first open on the comment section at ten oh-one, I'll move on to our agenda. Mr. Capello, would you mind, Mr. Old Business?
Sure. If there are no objections, I would like to move items A and B under business, educational reports, an H I E report, uh, H I E case DVD twelve, and also the minutes from our work session and executive session from June tenth, and the regular session and executive session through June twenty-fourth.
Second. Okay, thank you. Any questions, comments? Let's see, number both.
Mr. Capello?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Lord?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mrs. Watten?
Yes, except I abstained from the issue.
Mrs. Paul?
Yes, but I abstained with the two of them.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes. So would you mind moving to new action person, please?
I would like to move items one through four, including items under one, M, N, and O on the addendum. There are, uh, a couple of resignations, sick day payouts, there are a few rescinding and reissuing of sick day payouts from our last meeting. Uh, there's some summer, there's some summer, uh, uh, I E P meetings, consulting services, we have a new hired custodian, welcome aboard, uh, and leave replacement, and we also have, uh, a new bus driver, or not a new bus driver, a official. I'm not quite sure how that works.
He's new.
He's new, okay, new bus driver. That's in the, uh, that's in, under item one. Item two is Steve Forte, superintendent, quantitative goal number five. Number three is, uh, Damaris Gorowskis, uh, the business administrators, merit goal, uh, that's the number, that's the only one she had, right?
This is the second one?
The second one, okay, this is her second merit goal. And we are, we're seeing a resignation for a bus driver and approve a contract for this here. Second. Uh, can we get, uh, Steve, I don't wanna push on the spot, the, uh, there's a couple of, there's one, the first rescinding from the meeting, it's, uh, obvious that we're going from, uh, a full-time equivalent to a full-time, uh, excuse me, a full-time position. There's a couple of sick day payouts, it looks like we're, in one case, we're rescinding a lower amount and.
Like, what do you explain, what are we, from the.
I think it's like, we approved those two in the last board meeting, however, they were, like, when they were tight, so that's what we just said, and then again.
We're not actually spending anybody, any more money, it's just going to.
Different people.
Different people, the appropriate people, right? Okay.
And just for clarity on F and G, they say personnel number one, comma, zero, zero, dot, that's. Wait, was this on the agenda, or is it just a?
It was, uh, it was several, yes, because we had triple letters.
Oh, okay, got it, got it, okay.
It's actually those.
Yeah, 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 okay.
Last agenda, personnel, six, eight.
Yep, 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 thank you. Oh, whoa.
Because they're so rare, I'm just curious, how did we pick up the bus driver? How, how was the thing?
Actually, um, he came to us, he came from a private school, but you ask him how we've heard about him.
And doesn't he have any friends?
And, they're trying. They're trying. And actually, that number four is someone who signed these tickets, just how I did, kind of say.
Well, over to our poll. Well, over to our poll, so the new employees, we're doing, any questions? Ball, please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Bor?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Bull?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Capello, would you mind if I asked your question?
Sure. There are no objections under instruction program, I would like to move item number two, uh, which includes, uh, workshop expenses for, uh, some of our teachers for, uh, work knowing and training, and autism and annual conference and lineups.
Second. Sure. Any questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Bor?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Bull?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mr. Kim, would you mind if I asked your policy for this?
Sure, I'd be happy to. Today, we will be introducing, looks like, seven new policies for first reading. Uh, first one being, board member use of electronic email or internet, and some policies on inappropriate staff conduct, along with social use of social media, and electronic communications between the staff and students.
Second.
Sure. When we're, uh, going to be presenting these for second reading, there's a couple of them that, uh, have some extraneous words, instead of, uh, where they're not, sentence structure isn't quite right, I assume those are gonna be brushed up before we actually vote on the final, uh,
Do you mean, do you mean like in the red, red, uh?
Yeah, in the, in the additions that we're putting in.
I would say send that over to Steve, uh, just for something.
Okay, I'll, when I go, I'll go through them again and, uh, and point out, uh, put together a list.
Anybody have any questions or comments or discussion about zero one six nine? Um, the addition to that one is the social media specifically for board members?
This is, uh, specifically only when we're talking about school-related, uh, school-related stuff, right? Where it's not like every time you post something on social media, we have to say, oh, we are posting this as a private citizen, not a, uh, not a board member?
No, no, every time you post something, it's not, it's when you're acting as a board member or informing the public about something, whatever it is.
So if I were to take a Denville schools post about an accomplishment and repost it?
Would that be?
Cause I'm now posting.
Are you identifying yourself as a board member?
I guess my point is, every single time I post anything about the school, I'm gonna have to say, this is my opinion as a personal, as a citizen?
Yeah, and the lawyer said that we should have that all along, and I was kinda surprised.
Because there's no, that, that's the equivalent of me every time I walk into a meeting saying, I'm gonna give you an update on the board, but I'm saying this as a citizen, not as a board member? You don't, no, no one does.
Well, you do it, like, you would do it if you came up to a, up to a podium, uh, uh, community, a town council, right?
Well, you're maybe a bad example, if you have a press conference.
But if you're their liaison, you are a liaison for PTA, what's the difference in what you were to say verbally to a PTA meeting as opposed to taking that exact same comment and putting it on social media? It's still communicating, right? It's just a different way to communicate. I'm just confused why cause I can tell you that people are gonna come back and go, oh, okay, so that's not the board's opinion?
Right.
You know, like, it, it's almost sending mixed messages by making that, it, it's the legal out. I understand what we're doing, yeah, I'm just trying to, I'm trying to think of if I'm on the other side and I'm in the public, and every time Mike Anderson posts anything about the schools, he posts, I post this as a private citizen, not as a board member.
I believe you're a liaison at, at another, you know, volunteer committee in Denville, liaison. You know, I, when I go behind, I think, I will talk at points, I mentioned, um, I'm a representative of the school board, so I think I'm speaking them as a official representative of the school board. But when I write an op-ed piece to the neighborhoods, to, uh, to the, which I've done, I always have a caveat at the bottom that, uh, these users are, are non, it's not that important.
You can put that, they, they either express it that way.
But you're expressing an opinion at that point as opposed to
Most common is every.
Yeah, fact, that, that, that's my point, right? If you're saying, congratulations to Denville schools, I'm being ranked number one out of whatever, I now have to put at the bottom of there, I'm posting this as a private citizen, not as a board member.
What if you, what if you identify yourself, and you're personally, because you can do it, if you identify yourself in your, like, you know, like in Twitter, it says, between to my own and my opinion is my own, you see people like that? If you put it in, in that part, like disclaimer, it says that, uh, for you, it's difficult because you shouldn't be communicating. But if, like, Laura did, she should say, you know, uh, I'm, this is me communicating to you.
So one of us jumps on the Facebook and says, it's a snow day tomorrow. But this is my opinion, I said, as a private citizen, right?
It gets a little crazy, you're not giving an opinion, you're just
So would we be covered if, I, I think, if I understand what you're saying from Twitter and bias to Facebook, in our biography or something, or the about section, not every single post that we put, but any opinions expressed here are that of my own, not representative of Denville board.
Right, on top of your thing, right?
Right, so it's not every time I post, but you wouldn't see that unless you went and looked at my personal
Let me send Francis an email, she's gonna wanna help you with it, and ask her if she can clarify that.
That I would see as, you know,
That's reasonable.
I, I've connected to quite a few board members of other districts on Facebook, Twitter. I think once or twice, when they've given their opinion, I've seen people say, this is my opinion as a personal citizen, not as a member of the board of whatever. But if they're just posting, like, here's a, here's a link to a news article that came out, I mean, they're posting about their schools, but they're not
We retold, we reposted on the tweets, you know, you put on, on the, you know, actual, you know, project, uh, of a school, right? So, it's still You know, the wording on the policy doesn't speak about that if it's like fact, like a snow day, you have to put it disclaimer, it actually says, number three, yeah, if it's, if it's a personal opinion, then you must put that disclaimer on it, like, number three, under social media. It says, number four, if you are posting information about, uh, regarding anything about the district, then you have to first verify, verify it.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, so I'm thinking, so if you get something, yeah, it'll get verified, right?
Your opinion or sharing whatever you just posted.
If you put an opinion out, you have to disclaimer, if you're, if you're sharing information, which Well, I think Mike only even posted it once or twice, but it's a fact.
Yeah, yeah, but, but here's a sentence I have a problem with. The board recommends that each board member avoid expressing any information, details, answers to questions, conversations, corrections, or anything related to the board on their private social media posts or messages. That doesn't say your personal opinion, it said, if it said, we recommend that each avoid expressing their personal opinion, that, that's the sentence I have a problem with.
That's like
It's like the last, it is
The second paragraph, last sentence. Under social media.
Yep.
But this actually says the board recommends, it doesn't actually say it's policy. Right, I mean
The, it's actually a very, I think you put it in there.
It's, it's the difference between shall and should.
According to this, you should do that, it does not say you shall do that.
Steve, but look at the first, here, what about the first one, bullet number one. Board members who participate in social media as private citizens must, right, so this is now a must. Number one, make it clear they are participating in social media as a private citizen. The messenger post should contain a disclaimer that the information is being, is presented solely by the member as a private citizen, not authorized by or on behalf of the board. It actually doesn't even say that if you're talking about board, I appreciate it.
That's the, that's the sentence that, that bothers me, because basically, anytime we, any of us put anything on any social media site anywhere, anywhere, we have to include a disclaimer. Which is absolutely ludicrous when, you know
Yeah, I don't think that's the intention of it, though. I mean, I think, I think it's just my other words.
What is this? Eric, are you guys still talking about, uh, number one?
It's the beginning of number, because board members participate, it's like must.
It seems to me, like, it almost is referring to, you can't, you know, I can't say, K. Gold, board of, board of education member, or my title, you know, it's just my name, kind of thing, but it requires a disclaimer.
Yeah, it says, you should have a disclaimer of the message or post, not even, like Laura's saying, you can't even have it in your description of who you are.
Yeah, yeah, say the message.
Saying the message or post should contain a disclaimer. I, I think what the point of that is, is it should say something along the lines, make it clear that they're, if discussing board-related material, make it clear you're participating. I think that's the beginning, right? I think that should, cause if you're just saying, hey, the fireworks on, on Gertfield were great, I don't need to be like, I'm expressing this as an opinion, as a personal citizen, not as a board member.
Yeah, that'd be annoying. I think it's about the school, too.
Yeah. So completely agree with all that.
A lot of times, what will happen is, because this is not a, I say policy, it's actually What I, when I write back to her saying that, that, can you tweak the language a little bit, there's some sensitivity around some wording, still think it's a fact.
I wonder if number one is just to protect ourselves against a
I think she said, no.
Against the potential board member who decides not to use any discretion and start following the related company.
I think, I think the sentence before number one should say something about board members who participate in social media to discuss any information about the board as a private citizen must. I think that's the part that's probably missing.
Matters relating to the school district?
Yeah, something that said
Yes, combine that sentence with one and add a meaning.
Alright, we, we have a question, I'll send back to you, all right? The other question I had, Steve, was, so if we're gonna go down this road, does it make sense to create, we have a Denville school Twitter and Facebook account, but does it make sense to make a board? Or no, I mean, I don't know why, I don't wanna duplicate efforts and maybe that just crosses messages because we got multiple, but
Well, it does
There's no way, with this policy, there is no way for the board of education to communicate on social media, period. You can only communicate as a personal citizen, the board cannot have any comments on social media, because it says, all communication on behalf of the board and nor, and nor the school district should be posted on Denville Public School District, authorized social media sites.
No, but then yours should be a Denville authorized, you'd have to use Denville school.
That's, I guess that's my point, do we wanna create one that's like rolling from board of president to board of president? I don't wanna burden somebody in the future with having to do that, they also don't have to if they don't want to, but at least it gives the ability that if the board says, hey, we wanna post something to the public, we can. Right now, with this policy, I see no way for us to do it without a, like you said, without a
Look, we've got a community relations program planned.
Right?
Yeah.
I mean, there's some sense to that, if you think about it, right?
I, I don't disagree, yeah.
Doing that, because like right now, right, you, let's say you wanna get a message out from, you know, from the district, a big, you know, from the board, you're muddying the water right off the bat and coming from your personal account. Even though you're saying, I'm a head of board of president, so, you know, tying it into an official account that moves from then, president could use it or not, like you said.
Yes.
You know, how to repost everything, Steve, though, it's like, you know. So, but then with that, with the current wording, then it still limit you to say, like, you go and leave your parents and say, it's a snow day, or it's, you're rescinding this message, or
It's not a, it's not a opinion.
I think it's gotta be an opinion. I think if it's a, and maybe you can say there, like, reposting, well, reposting without comment would be, because now you add in, if you, you know, I can repost something you say and say, look what this bozo's posting, I mean, now I'm adding my opinion, right? And now that becomes a message for the board.
That's, that's the whole point.
Yes, I agree.
And it's also like to make sure, because, you know, it's easy to say, like, all of us, because we're not gonna do it, but again, you think about who else is sitting with cheese, like, you know, following, uh, pro-life or following pro-choice, right? That kinda stuff, you know, you can't, those kinds of things can't be part of your, of, of your job, right? Just can't. That's where this came from.
So I think we, we've got some things to
How much?
I, I agree with that concept, though, sure.
Do you think that, I don't wanna, I don't wanna, I'm not suggesting I write a policy that's too restrictive, but should board members be commenting on social media even with that declaration that anything about board business?
Well, with board business, like, you hire the new personnel, something like that, that's pretty popular, right?
I don't think you can, with, that's when you start getting into, and I'm not a lawyer, anyway, you should inform, you're getting into a restriction of
Right, my understanding is.
Yeah, you can't restrict a private citizen just because they're an elected board member from saying, as a private citizen, you can't get your opinion on that, like. There's obviously restrictions, but what you could say is
Sure, the legality, but that's what I'm saying, I'm trying to think of a time when any of us sitting here have ever made a comment about Yeah.
There was something like this, right, Don, a while ago? Where I think a board member made a public comment without identifying themselves and became like an ethics issue, well, it was a while ago.
I mean, well, it's so heated, I don't, I don't
I'll bring your concern, I'll bring your concerns to a board, it's all right, yes.
Should we, uh, take this one on first reading?
No.
No, we don't first, and we'll just
No, because I wanna have, well, yours is, I, your, I'll say, not as concerned about is the staff, I'll bet you know, just
So, can I ask you one on the staff one, Nancy? Anybody have any other questions on the board one? On the staff one, um, so I, I think this is a good idea, the, the one, uh, three, two, eight, two. Um, so the section that's read down on page three, the additional part you added. Okay.
Yep.
Um, do we, so it says that they must create using their Denville email account, right? But we don't say what the name of it should be. But I see a lot of different conventions out there of LV, PE, whatever, like, do we wanna have a consistency with if you're, you know, a Lakeview teacher, or Riverview teacher, or Valley View, representing a science department, or a math department, or STEM, I don't or are we just gonna let them pick what that handle, so to say, or what the right term is?
Can we just add that it's group by the building, student, or the principal, or
You follow what I'm saying, Steve?
Yeah, I'm just holding on, sorry. So, yeah, I, I talked, I talked a lot about this with her. And the most important part of this whole thing was that it's protecting the district from people basically doing the things that are listed in the red. And I did talk to her about what you're saying. And I also didn't wanna make it too, uh, you know, if we want people to do it, we want, we don't want to, to, to make it so hard, because there's somebody who's been redoing things that they already did. And I also saw, what was the other thing I saw? The big one about eighteen, number eighteen, don't, there's no community of personal professional, but that was important. The nineteen.
Good. So I, I guess my concern is, when we talk about protecting the district, we're basically saying, any, any staff member creating, creating a social media account is one, the only caveat we're basically saying, any staff member created a social media account is, the only caveat is, and there's obviously rules once you create, but creating it, all you need to do is to use your Denville Public School email address.
Right.
My only concern is, it doesn't prevent them from creating a name that we may not think is appropriate.
So we do have the thing all the way to the bottom, that we deserve the right to take down your. The Board has a right, as some discretion requires, that if we take down such a media account, it needs to be your other, by the potential policies for you to always authorize your social media requirement, stuff like that. How many things should contact their supervisor if they have questions? A couple of the things that I was talking about before are twelve and thirteen on this policy. Twelve says staff members should, must not endorse, generally staff members should not be endorsing.
I guess so.
And social media should, must not be used. Are we going with should or are we going with must? Because those are two very different things when it comes down to enforcing it. Okay, I'll bring it up later. So, and I mean, there's similar things, I mean, basically, these points were, from what I saw, not exactly cut and pasted through the other similar policies, but there's similar issues. Should versus must is a huge thing that we need to get sorted out and needs to be consistent through all of these policies, because we can't have, like, the Board musting and the teachers shoulding, or vice versa. Which is absolutely, we gotta agree with that, I apologize.
Steve, do we define social media as a policy?
We do. It doesn't, I told him to keep it so that it wasn't just like the one thing. So, just don't look social media, we're excited to say what it is.
Yeah. So the other thing, too, is, going back to nineteen for a second, Steve? That entire section is social networking, and then we talk about text. I'm not sure. How do we define text?
Because if you read the whole thing all the way to the top, it does identify as texting to something like, about its personal communications students. Staff members are advised to be concerned and aware of such contact being appropriated and included out there into communication and or publications, email, text messaging, social networking, or other forms of electronic communications directed and nor valid for people who are public, just like. So this thing does include that tag. So when you're trying, so I asked Charles Sessman for at least a year, writing the policy, and. So when you make your own stuff, you're kind of fitting it into something else, you know what I mean? Like, probably, and Phil, the casual, told me he's going to have it. We probably will have policies just on social media with a different number and everything, and then we can just change this. But I wanted, I wanted something up and running for when we start this new year off.
So the news section is that. So we got the old section that says, when using personal social networking sites, school staff members, and it's got a letter in black because they were previous, then it says, social media use restriction, professional responsibility, I don't know. I believe that section is specifically for a school account.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
We have a policy, we have a separate policy on people using their own social media.
I think it's right above it, right?
Yeah, it is, exactly.
Yeah, so I guess, I'm just not worried in the beginning, you may want to think about. Oh, sorry, this line right there, social media use, I think we should almost take the headline from when using personal social media to when using professional, you know, as a staff member or something, representing the school. Where's this now? Just go down to the red section, the first line in red.
Social media use restriction, professional responsibilities.
I don't, I, when I read the bullet points, I took it as that's if you have a school stuff, social media account here, right? Isn't that?
Down here is the school stuff.
Yeah, I didn't, the headline doesn't read to me like this is the section that's for if you have a professional.
So you're saying like at the word, school or something?
Yeah, something that, it just says restrictions, professional, maybe, I don't know. Doesn't seem to indicate any different kind of personal site, professional site as the headline. Let's, I guess, guys, let's just take a look at these and send recommendations back to Steve. I think the more highs, the more highs we get on it and spend a little more time looking at it, it'll be better, because like Steve said, this is not a Strauss Sessman one, so a lot of Strauss Sessman ones are, have been reviewed by multiple lawyers. But these, let's just make sure we understand it as we're going through it. And if there's recommendations on tweaking the wording, get with that, Steve.
Yeah, definitely.
But I'm glad we're putting these in place. Any other questions for our first reading policy, or still on the agenda?
For forty-two eighty-two and forty-two eighty-three, number six in the red, it all has a should, shall discrepancy also.
Yeah, thirty-two eighty-two.
Forty-two eighty-two.
Thirty, yeah.
And forty-two eighty-three as well.
Any other questions? Same, now roll call, please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mrs. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Same.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes. All right, Mr. Cass, we're going to leave the debate.
Sure.
At thirty-nine is to move. Number one is to approve the unfortunately enclosed checklist for a PMC six thousand three hundred sixteen dollars. Number two is to approve four BTS for New Jersey State contract for premium maintenance service net for professional support. An annual cost of twenty-one thousand nine hundred dollars for the upcoming school year. Number three, to authorize the administrator to dispose of St. Mary's obsolete, non-functional, non-public books, displays materials, nurses supplies, et cetera. Number four is to approve prime healthcare services to provide behavioral services for the district, not to exceed a hundred sixty thousand dollars for the upcoming school year. Numbers five, six, and seven are protect services from altitude unlimited. Number eight and nine is to approve Dell EMC for Chromebooks, three hundred one total. Thirty-five of them will be for the use of it in lieu of computers for the computer labs. Number ten, to approve the proposal for volume cases for the purchase of six hundred Chromebook bags for valued school students at a cost of seven thousand seven hundred seventy dollars for the upcoming school year. Number eleven is to approve a proposal for Genesis Educational Systems for Student Information System ASP Services at an annual cost of twenty-nine thousand eight hundred fourteen dollars for the upcoming school year. Number twelve is to approve the settlement agreement to reimburse parents' counseling sessions and counseling plan in July and August two thousand nineteen and the upcoming school year, not to exceed eighteen hundred dollars. Pursued two oh two four eight seven four. Number thirteen is to approve the parent transportation contract for a student to be transported for the upcoming school year at a total cost of two thousand seven hundred dollars.
Same. And here's Kim, any questions? The attached list of the obsolete, non-functional stuff from St. Mary's, two things. One, we have made sure that none of the things there are usable and by us. And two, why are we the ones who get to dispose of it?
We are a chemical entity to fund those.
Oh, the same reason why we have to funnel all the, those kind of one funds through us to them.
And any, any supplies that they have purchased with brand, I'm actually willing to be public through this. So we are responsible for those services as well.
Gotcha, I didn't.
Every way to acquire some of the technology from them.
Okay. The list that we went through, I didn't recognize any of the textbooks from my, from my time as the IMP chair. A certain author, Incipid, grasped it. Just want to make sure somebody else is checking.
Number eight, Chromebooks, that's the two hundred sixty-six, that's for the upcoming system class.
Yeah. And just as a note for a way on number ten, I did talk to Steve today as well as the foundation. While they'll approve the full amount, there may be a donation from the foundation. There's a few things pending out there for that, so there's a potential. That could be a little bit less, or some of it may be funded by the foundation of Denville. Not approved yet and still kind of working on it, but. Is that correct to you?
Yep.
Steve, can you talk about thirteen of them? That is a parent, um, instead of use during the district and where they live, the area where they live, the buses cannot get through the roads, so we need to provide a parent transportation agreement. It's cheaper and sending driver and empties to small bus, he doesn't go.
Grant, I'm sorry, so the parents' driving?
Yes. And we do have, we have all the.
Yeah, I just sort of realized that was the topic.
Yes, the parents' driving, still picking up, driving more than picking up.
We have a few, it usually, it always works out on a creative angle, actually.
If the connection's poor, you have to offer.
Any other questions?
What's that? I was just speculating as to the areas in town where a bus couldn't get to.
Mr. Mary, close to Rockaway.
I don't, I'm not asking for details, like I said, I was just speculating.
Any else? Roll call, please.
Mr. Capello?
Yes.
Mr. Cass?
Yes.
Mr. Lur?
Yes.
Mr. Kim?
Yes.
Mrs. Wagner?
Yes.
Mrs. Cool?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Nothing on operations, correct. Give it a pause.
Got it, one thing. So we are doing this, here's a school course legislative, person is taking us on a field trip to see some legislative, this is summer, we do it every summer. So right now I have appointed the Assembly of Bucow on the twenty-ninth of July. It's a good opportunity to raise issues and concerns of ours, so I have a couple, obviously, on my list. I'm funding mandates, for housing, for those issues. If there's any others that you guys would like me to bring up, between them and that, if you could follow them my way, I will, you know, try to consolidate them onto a list over the next.
Anybody have anything else? Nothing else, and we launch our agenda, open up the second open public comment section at ten forty-one P M. Once again, if anybody has any questions or comments, they can come up to the microphone and say their name and address of the record and sign in. No one rushed the podium, I'll close the public comment section last year by ten forty-two P M. Please, Jared.
Second.
You want a senior or second sector, bro? Mr. Lur, Mr. Kim, all the favor?
Aye.
Any names? None, any extensions? None, we are closed at ten forty-two P M.